All right, folks, are we ready to begin the work session? Iowa City Council Work Session for January 22, 2019. The first item is the fiscal year 2020 budget discussion. Jeff, did you have a list of specific decisions you are aware that we need to make? Or are you waiting us for just to toss out specific ideas?
Well, we do have one memo in the packet, and that is in response to your request for information on shifting temporary or hourly staff to a permanent status. So there's some cost information that you have there and that we can help talk through if you want. The other remaining topic that I'm aware of would be the relocation of the St. Say-Gilmore House. So Mayor, if you want to fill folks in on the meeting we had with the university, I'm not sure we're ready to make a decision on that, but we could at least give an update on that.
Sure.
And anything else that, again, the council wants to discuss related to the budget.
I wonder if we could begin with Ashley providing a brief summary of the information that's in the memo you Ashley provided us?
Of course. So council requested exploration of what it would look like if we moved some or all part-time hourly employees to a permanent position or a permanent status position. We ran a report and ended up scanning through 355 employees. So they hold a variety of positions. I think a greater number of positions than 355. Those were individuals. Of those, we selected 38 based on the fact that they work approximately 20 hours per week on average. There are no AFSMI employees, union employees, that currently work less than 20 hours a week. So that was our gauge for how to determine what types of positions would be considered. These also hold statuses as positions, responsibilities that are held year-round. So they're not seasonal employees that would be hired into work on recreation programs or park maintenance seasonally, working with public works on particular projects over the construction season. These are people who work in our facilities and do jobs year-round generally. So they came from different departments. We have recreation, government buildings, park maintenance. There's a couple in public works and water and engineering. We have several at the senior center. Communications has three positions. And then there are quite a few at the library as well. A couple of housing authority, I missed that as well. But we took a look at cost analysis. So we started at the very, very minimum amount that an employee coming into the AFSMI union would receive as base pay. So a grade-one, step-one pay to do our cost analysis. We added insurance and costs that we take out and pay for FICA and IFRS pension. And then we also incorporated health insurance and dental insurance to see what that cost to the city would be for all 38. So depending on, you know, whether this would be considered further, we could, we would need some direction as to what, which of those positions end up in a status change. We would have to coordinate with the union as well for whatever they consider to be a position that they would want to add to their union. So I have a couple of other pieces of data. Just, I'm ready if you have questions.
Okay. What do our council members have to say?
Well, one question I would have is, we do have permanent part-time employees, correct?
Yes.
What distinguishes this group of 38 positions from those other positions? Is there, I would think there must be some criteria as to why they would not be considered permanent part-time?
Well, they hold, these particular positions were determined to not be part of the bargaining unit based on their responsibilities and tasks that they perform. There's a greater flexibility in what these positions do operationally. It gives flexibility to our departments to determine, you know, how many hours they need a pool manager, how many hours they need a recreation coordinator, how many hours we need, you know, various other services, reception at their desks and things. So it's just a determination of who's, what the union considers a position in their group.
Yeah, if I could jump in, there's, I don't know if there's a clean line that we can give you on where that is. Partly, it's hours worked. So a lot of the permanent part-time that are incorporated into the union or even non-union, they're going to be 20 or more, whereas a lot of the hourly positions are less than 20. We picked the ones that work at the higher range for those hourly ones based on what we thought you were looking at. We make determinations on, well, I'll give you an example. So a few years ago in our budget, we converted a planning position to, it was our historic preservation planner, from temporary to permanent. And we did that because when you do that, you start to offer benefits to those employees. And hopefully, you don't see as much turnover in those positions. So a lot of the positions here, we expect turnover throughout the, well, I guess more frequent turnover in those positions. And when we have those permanent positions, we hope to hold on to those employees a little bit longer. So that's one of the rationale. But I don't know if there's a clean distinction if that's what you're looking for. It's kind of a case-by-case determination.
I'll further clarify. When you look at the list of positions that were identified, there are more than 38 people who hold some of these positions. So for example, the customer service representative at recreation, there are 25 people that do that job, and only eight of those positions were determined as working in that threshold where we would consider them to be a permanent level position. There may still be a need for someone to fill in for that position if there's an absence or just to provide greater flexibility in what those tasks are. The complication arises when you have the same person doing a very similar job, having a permanent versus a temporary hourly status. It gets complicated.
Maz, I know you wanted to say something?
I want to say a lot saying on this, not only something. First, the analysis shows that the city currently employs 38 people to work an average of 20 hours per week. An average means maybe more, maybe less than 20, which is, and this 20 hours average, it will be consistent year-round, this schedule. But we are not providing employer-baited health insurance or dental insurance of this employee. I don't think this is good practice by the city. No, we shouldn't do that from the first place. And why do we have so many employees in this situation? This employment status is just away from paying the employer's health insurance and dental insurance. You know, you just talking about the recreation center, and you're saying that there is money position. I'm really looking forward, even especially on the recreation center. For the customer service on the front desk, we have many employees work there. And I understand most of them are students, but I know many people who work there, they still like seeking more hours because some of them are not students, and they would like to have more hours to stay there. And something like the rec center, really, we need employment, employees there who really going to be responsible, dealing with a lot of people. If we keep changing the person who's sitting there, and I don't know, there is some situation happen there, and the staff have to call the police for the people who use the recreation center for no reason, because maybe she's young and she cannot even have a lot, like good training. That's why I really looking forward to have like permanent position for those people so they can be trained well and pay well and have health insurance, most likely they will stay. And all of, what the difference between somebody work really as, you know, Mr. Thomas said, is they work there more than 20 hours or 20 and above, and they come every day to the work, and they do their job like the right way, and they don't get insurance. And there is another person who is part-time, permanent, work 20 hours also, and get insurance. I don't think this is really good practice by the city. The memo says the actual cost may vary, you know, but we need a frame cost estimate before we can make a decision. And I really encourage, ask me to come here and speak on that. Because I remember when we were talking about increasing the minimum wage for the employee here, for the seasonal city employee, one of the AFSMI representatives said, also, I would like to see more permanent job. She emphasized that, and I went yesterday to the video to make sure I remember right. That's why I really encourage them to come over. And as I said again, that's my last thing, whenever we give people insurance, most likely they're going to stay on the job. And that's why the city should do it. And we have to set the example where there's city government here. How can we just go around the law and give those people like 20 hours or more and don't give them, you know, the health insurance? That's real, I think, like we sneaking around the law. Thank you.
Do we have any information on the tenure of these staff that we're talking about? Because, and did they leave for a reason? Because I know, for example, the young man at the front desk here has just left because he'd finished school, and that was his whole intention of working that job. Then he got a permanent job elsewhere because he'd finished school. So it worked for him. So is there any information on that or?
We don't have tenure information now. And I did want to point out real quick that you do have a statement from AFSMI in your late handouts. The representative couldn't make it tonight, I think, due to the weather complications. But if you look in your late handouts, you can get a sense of what AFSMI's position is on this. But I'm sorry, I know we don't have that.
Yeah, but my comment on that would be that I think before we made any decision on this, that I think you as a staff and someone from council, maybe two, should sit down and meet with AFSMI, and they should take a serious look at it. And perhaps there are some of the categories that they feel. Because I spoke with the AFSMI person also, and I know they have some concerns as far as how that's going to affect some employees that maybe they'll lose their jobs because of that if you put more in permanent status or they have a different supervisor or something of that nature. So I think it's something.
The email we received points to that as a significant challenge.
Right, we did get a letter from them in the late handout, which I appreciate their comments. And I, so I think we really do need to include them in the discussion.
Ashley, could you remind us of what the estimated cost would be for converting 38 employees?
So if we were to enter every single one of these positions into that first step, which we would anticipate it would end up being somewhere different within their AFSMI pay plan, just based on their position responsibilities, we're looking at an increase in wages of approximately $254,400. We would also be looking at an increased benefit pay, so that includes the health insurance and dental for $367,000. So a total would be $621,400 for 38 positions approximately. You know, if there's a change in the number of employees that would, that would take the health insurance, so if, you know, 50% of them would end up taking that health insurance, excuse me, it would just vary in cost. So the insurance would drop a little bit, but it would still be in, you know, several thousand, several hundred thousand dollars for that.
And this would be a recurring cost year by year, correct?
It would. So this is FY '20, there's no compounding. We didn't go that far out. But it would compound. And we also, just to understand, this is the difference between bringing those employees up to the current $1,150 that is budgeted this year, plus the additional to bring them into the, into the union pay plan.
One last question. If we chose to do this, how would we pay for it?
It would be very difficult right now because it's a recurring cost, and we don't have the flexibility to bring in that type of recurring cost right now. So we'd have to float it on reserves for the first year. And basically, when it comes down to next year's budget, we're going to have to do everything we can to free up operational costs of that amount. And we'll have a more precise amount at that time. But for the time being, unless you want to identify cuts in the next couple of weeks to the operating budget, we're not going to have that flexibility.
Isn't this going to come from the employee benefit levy?
No, you could probably cover some of the costs with the employee benefit levy, but I don't think you could probably cover it all with the.
I don't mean for this year because you already, yeah. But I mean like next year, like next budget.
Yeah, we'd have to look at that. So yeah, in addition, you could cut, you can raise, you can raise taxes, you can cut expenses. If you hold things the way they are proposed right now, you're looking at using reserves. But if you tell us, figure out a way to fund this dollar amount, we're going to have to come back to you with multiple scenarios.
What I would really like to do is, we have this letter from Terry Byers. She's one of the heads of the local AFSMI union. And she has said the following in her comment from January 29, 2019, the late handouts, it's 9i. It's maddening to see all these hourly jobs when we know there are permanent jobs that could be created or expanded for some tasks. As far as I can tell, the precise issue that we're dealing with is what happens for some of these employees over the course of a period of a number of years that are sort of permanently stuck in this sort of second-tier job where they're not able to get the permanent part-time position, and they're not able to get the benefits when, in effect, they are doing this work over the long time, right? And so I think she raises a very, very good point. And I think to Pauline's point, getting that input, the email that we have before us does not give us a sufficient level of detail. It seems like to me this is sort of her, and it's no offense to her, I think she did a great job in response to the proposal. But what I would like to see is a, to the extent that AFSMI is interested in doing this, much more detail in terms of specific proposals that they have in terms of switching some of these from part-time to permanent part-time to get their input, or potentially some of them to full-time. I think that that is very, that is something we need to take a look at. In terms of this immediate budget year, I don't think we're really ready to make a decision of this magnitude without getting that level of detail. But I would like to hear more from them in terms of a specific proposal that they would have, to the extent that they would like to. I share your concern, your concerns, Jim. You know, if we're talking about approximately a million dollars, we have some other big-ticket items. And I remain committed to increasing the minimum wage, which I understand to $15 an hour, which could be up to $1 million a year if we expand those for the next three years up to $15 an hour. So I want to make sure that we're able to do that. But I want a greater number, amount of detail from AFSMI in terms of what they're thinking. I do think operationally, it has hurt us to some degree where we do have certain jobs that should be more permanent, that we have a great deal of turnover. And I think that that has caused some uncertainty in terms of the provision of services. So I think as a long-term goal, we need to do it. In terms of this immediate budget year in the next two weeks, I think it's too complicated a decision to make on this short of notice. So that's sort of where I am at this point.
I would agree with you, Rockne. I think one of the things we did was, we had a meeting, I believe, back in August where council was asked to bring ideas to staff in terms of any major budget items so that staff had time to, you know, put that into the planning for the year. And I think something this major needs to be brought in at that point in time where it really gives staff time to think about it in context of the big budget for the year. So one, I think it's late for this big of an amount to be trying to be added for the 2020 budget. And secondly, I would just quote a couple other things from Terry Byers' email from the union. And she said, she said, "Don't get me wrong, I would love to have hundreds of potential new members, but I know this won't be the case. Many of the jobs would be consolidated or eliminated. Another factor that isn't being taken into effect is the number of permanent jobs all over the city that have in their description supervising of hourly employees. Concerned that that would go away. I would love to see more permanent employees, be full-time, but there isn't money for that." So I think, you know, the budget can only stretch so wide. So I think while they very much would like to have more full-time, more permanent employees, I think they also understand that we have a limited budget. And I don't see how we can move forward with this for the 2020 budget.
Yeah, it seemed to me Terry's email was pretty ambivalent about the specific proposal in front of us. So what we could do is, here's what I suggest, and I think it's consistent with Rockne just said and what Susan just said. We could choose not to do this specific action this year, but instruct the staff to consult with our labor representatives about the list of 38. See if there are specific suggestions about which ones they think would agree, are most in need of conversion, something like that. I don't want to tie your hands, Jeff, here, but something that involves some kind of consultation. Looking forward to the forthcoming budget year, I personally would not support the spending, committing this kind, this amount of money for this year's budget when we're this far along into the process. But I do think it's worth looking at more carefully. I don't know what the rest of you think.
But Jim, we, I guess, I don't know why not. If we have 2.9 million for the CERBRAZ, for the council fund, which is not going to affect any other fund, and if we don't give our employees 600,000 out of this CERBRAZ fund, this is, we go to the reserve. Why we are saving and we are abusing our employees? We are just like making them come here and do everything and not getting like, getting like health insurance. You just telling me that we're going to put like almost 2 million. We saving them for facility, for emergency? We don't want to give it to those people just because we did not like really thought about it in the beginning?
I personally would be a lot more persuaded if any employees had approached me and said, "We really need for you to do this." Not a single employee.
They approached me, do you want me to bring some people here?
They may have approached you.
Because I deal with those kind of people like normally. I met with those kind of people, maybe you are not, but I always meet with those people. And they always telling me, especially the rec center people. And I guess, I don't know, but I think Pauline also heard from someone about this. Somebody told me that, you know, somebody told you they need more hours and they need to be like, get benefit. I don't know. Sometimes people, they don't have to reach out to you if you really see something wrong going on, you just have to go ahead and correct it. This is absolutely wrong to be happening by the city. Sometimes even we told the private business not to do this. And we, as a government, we doing this? And why should we save? If you're really passionate about doing it, why should we save money and not giving those people health insurance and benefit?
I appreciate your concern, Maz, here, because that is very valid. But I know that it's not intentional on the city's part to have ever done that. Having worked for the university for over 38 years, they do the same practice. If you work under so many hours per week, you're considered just part-time or hourly, and you don't receive benefits. So, and they're a very large employer in the community, and they do this very same practice. It'd be way more than 38 employees that would fall into that category. So I mean, it's not the city intentionally doing this, but I do have a lot of concerns about it. I'm also concerned from what I've heard and talking to the union and some of the employees that in this position as temporary or hourly, they have a flexibility of hours. And I'm not sure if Ashley would be able to answer that, or Jeff, that if that would go away, if they then were more determined to be permanent, or yeah, permanent or not, just hourly, they wouldn't have that same flexibility of hours that they have as a part-time hourly. Because that would concern me. And so I think hearing from all of these that would be affected if indeed, if that's their concern, and meeting with the union. And they should talk to the union if they have these concerns.
I think for me, it's not so much the 621,000 that we can, you know, put in the budget really quickly. I think it's, it would be done too quickly, and it would be done without, you know, considering the individuals that jobs could be affected, or they could lose their jobs. And then we're really, we really need some time to reexamine those jobs, those positions. Are some of them going from 20 to 40? And so I think if we, if we, you know, kind of push this through, then, you know, a lot of people are going to be affected, and we may not be taking into account all the things linked to doing something like this. So it's not the money, because I think we could find the money. So it's not about the money. It really is about, you know, let us now, you know, talk about how can we work with staff, give them some direction on moving this forward, and, you know, and making sure that it's in our budget in the future. And that's what we want to do as a majority.
I know I'm not going to get bored on this, but I'm going to continue talking. And I'm going to ask Jeff a question. You bros mentioned, you text me that, and you said, "There is money, 580 that been put aside for some, for nothing?" And can you tell us me about that? Because I really don't know. We have like 500 something, 80 something, we just put it aside without using it. I really don't know anything about that. If you can tell us why that money being put aside.
Our general fund has a 1% contingency. That's a pretty standard practice with budgets. You budget a percent. That is a contingency for unforeseen operational costs that come up throughout the year.
This is the one, exactly. This is the unseen one, and we just saw it. Why we don't use that money?
I think what Jeff's referring to is something like a fire at the landfill.
Anything.
Something that really comes completely out of the blue and requires an expenditure that we were not anticipating at all. What you're asking us to do now is commit the city to roughly $700,000 a year or more into the foreseeable future. That is not responding to a contingency. That's not what a contingency fund is for.
What about the 2 million?
What 2 million?
Out of the CERBRAZ fund that we're going to put it on the reserve.
I'm sorry, I don't know what fund you're referring to.
That's the fiscal year '18 surplus. So those are dollars that we don't anticipate.
That's the council dollar.
We don't anticipate to get those dollars year after year. So I would always caution the city council to use surplus dollars to fund operational. Because when you're hiring an employee, you are doing so not with the expectation of one year's worth of employment, but that you can keep that employee permanently. So I would never recommend that you use surplus dollars for those types of operational expenses. That's why we focus on things like capital projects or reserves, one-time expenses when we are fortunate to have a surplus like we did in fiscal year '18.
I think we have really good reserve. We have almost 5 million for the emergency reserve. We have that 500 somewhere for also this, wherever it come up. And we have also now the 2 million that we can really use from that facility reserve, which is, I think, this should be done now. And I'm going to ask you also another question. My understanding, all the city benefit and wages, it come from special revenue levies, which is called employee benefit. Am I right or not?
I don't know. I'd have to, I'd have to get into Dennis, or talk with Dennis. Maybe Dennis can come up and answer that. I don't know if we take all wages and benefits out of that employee benefits levy.
Dennis Bachen said, "Finance Director, there is a levy that can be used for employee benefits. There is no cap to that levy, but can only be used for employee benefits."
Yes.
So that's what it's limited to.
You mean next year, if we say we approve it, and we use any kind of fund for this year, 600, but next year, it will come actually for. year, 600, but next year, it will come actually from the taxpayer, right?
Yeah.
Because the levy will be increased by like some kind of percentage, which is going to make additional of 600,000, right?
We could increase the employee benefits levy to cover the benefits portion of these employees, and we are already to some degree. Because for what their current wage is, we do levy for some of their FICA and IPers that are being covered. We would not be able to use that levy for the additional wages. So if they go from the $11.50 to $17.89 or higher, we would not be able to use that levy for that.
It will come from the general fund?
It would have to come from the general fund.
Okay.
Okay, we have lots of other topics to discuss. I'd like to see if we can move on. Are there four people in support of what Mazza here has recommended? If you support, please just say, aye, I do, or yes. Okay. So I don't see support for that.
Yeah.
I made an alternative suggestion, which was to not do it this year, but to instruct the staff to look more carefully at this. You want to help me with some language here, Rockne?
I do. I would move to evaluate this proposal pending our next budget review year. Presumably that would be FY '21, where we would have that August discussion. And from this point to that, what I'd like to do is get the consultation with our unions to making sure that we're evaluating this holistically with our unions to evaluate this. So I don't know if that's specific enough from motion.
That language sounds pretty good to me. I just want to make sure we're not literally tying our city manager's hands, because...
Consideration. So move to further evaluate the proposal as made by Mazza here, except not this year, the following year, in consultation with the union to get more particulars as to the impact on the budget and the staffing levels.
This sounds reasonable to me.
But you are not agreeing to do it next year.
That would be correct.
But you are just want to evaluate it next year.
Yes. Yes.
Oh my gosh, okay.
Evaluate it to see whether it would be incorporated in next year's budget.
I thought because we don't have money this year, that's why we want to do it next year. So it will, we approve it for next year, but we are not approve it for this year. But this is completely not. You are sinking for evaluation for next year.
Yes.
Jim, one thing I might add, I did do a little bit of analysis of what other cities do. I always find that to be a useful exercise in terms of whatever subject we're discussing. And, you know, I would add to this analysis that we would be doing next year, comparable analysis. I did find that Ames and Madison have an arrangement where their hourly employees, based on the number of hours that they work, get a prorated healthcare package, kind of like city council does. So, I mean, there are nuances beyond, you know, what we've discussed, which potentially could lower the cost of this, this whole subject matter. So, you know, I think it's a very complicated issue.
Okay, so this sounds like a friendly amendment to the way Rockne expressed that idea. Yeah, so are there at least four people in agreement with that combination of things?
Yes.
Jeff, do you understand what we're looking for here? Good deal. Thank you. Okay, our next item, oh, we're still in the same item, aren't we? So are there other particular proposals that have to do with the fiscal year 2020 budget? Jeff, you mentioned the St. Say Gilmore House. I can provide the council with a very brief update about this. Last week, Jeff and I met with President Harold at the university to explore, begin exploring the possibility of either us purchasing that house, or somehow investing in the preservation and long-term preservation of that house while retaining it in the university's ownership, and other possibilities. I think we had a very fruitful meeting. My sense was that the president responded with interest. And at some, at one point, he basically said, well, as you know, well, I think I can say this in all fairness, he said, we won't leave you in the lurch. And that, I understood that to mean, they want to work with us, and therefore, I certainly found it to be a very fruitful and hopefully very constructive meeting. There will be further meetings that are related to this. Yeah, so beyond, with regard to the budget and the cost, I think we should just leave, what is it, 330 in there as a placeholder? If we eventually have to move it across the street, the cost will be higher if we choose to do that.
One detail that I wanted to get, though, related to this, Jim, is we're going to get, I think, from Simon, an approximate selling price, fair market value, because we all got sticker shock. It's my understanding it's going to be about, potentially up to $2 million total, including the value of the parcel across the street, the moving costs, remodeling, et cetera, to move it across the street. And so I had asked Simon, what would the fair market value be with a historic landmark designation and no other restriction for the city just to sell it outright if we were to do that? Were we able to get that ballpark figure?
Yeah, I have it, I have it handy here. One second, I can... Well, Simon, if you've got it handy, you come up. Here it is.
I'm going to go off of memory here, but the average was 470,000.
Yeah.
For a projected sale price. I believe the range was roughly 430 to 516, I think was the high and low end of that range. And that's no historical designation, and roughly the same land cost that's assessed for now.
So you'd be looking at, you're looking at 1.2 million roughly in rehab, moving and rehab costs. If you want to factor in the cost of the land, which we already own, you're roughly at about a million. So you're right, 2 million, give or take a little bit. And then based on comparable sales, and we worked with the city assessor, Simon did, to figure out what type of square footage, what comparable apartments have sold for, and it's about 470,000 was our best guess.
So we'd be looking at approximately 1.6 million dollar loss?
Roughly.
Okay. That's problematic.
Okay, so what I just ask you to do is stay tuned. There will be subsequent conversations, and I'll report back to you about it.
Good.
And so on. All right, are there other particular items for the fiscal year 2020 budget?
Well, one that, we did get some letters on this, that I would like to ask for support is the Form Based Code for Northside Marketplace. You know, I do think it's something that needs to be addressed now. We've seen, I think just in the last, I want to say, seven years, rezonings of three properties in the market, Northside Marketplace area, the corner of Lynn Bloomington, and then the two northern corners at Lynn and Market. So we're seeing, you know, pressures, shall we say, for that development in that area. Northside Marketplace is one of our more unique commercial areas. It's one of our more beloved commercial areas. It's something that I think we need to address. It also has impacts on some of the historic designations that have come before us. So what I had said to those that I spoke with on this was, you know, the cost, I believe, of our consultant work for the Northside included the Northside neighborhood in addition to the commercial area of Northside Marketplace. So I would, I would like to just focus for the time being on the commercial area and move forward on that in the next budget session. I don't know if we have figures for what that might be. I guess we would, the starting point would be looking at what the Opticos estimate would be, and then if we're not comfortable with that, I think we may want to consider putting it out for an RFP for other consultants that could do the work.
Jeff, do you have any idea what it might cost?
Well, about a year ago, we had this conversation determining whether we go with the South District Form Based Code or the Northside Form Based Code. The Northside estimate was 275,000. Now that included the larger residential neighborhood, too. We didn't look at ever shrinking it up. Council gave us the direction to go with the South District, and you just approved that contract at your most recent meeting, I believe. So I would guess you're still, if you go sole source with Opticos again, you pay a premium again to work with Opticos, you're probably, you're probably still going to be looking, you know, north of 150,000, I would guess, even if you shrink it up there. A bigger concern for me is just our staff capacity to manage two of these processes in addition to the regular flow of planning reviews that we have to do. You know, our planning team is pretty small, and to manage two contracts like that would be a tall ask for them.
That was the question I was going to ask. And so I, yeah, I mean, I think we dealt with this a year ago, and I think, I think it was a challenge for all of us at that time, because we really wanted to do both, and wanted to do both of them as quick as possible, but ultimately decided that the South Side would take precedence, because that was basically greenfield, and we wanted to get it done before that was all developed with a bunch of single-family homes, and it was basically too late. And I think it was, it was a combination of the money, but also just staff capacity. And so as much as I'd like to move forward with this now, I think it needs to wait.
I just think that it's important that we not lose sight of this, because it's such an important part of our community, and we keep talking about placeholders, and I would hope that, I mean, 150,000 doesn't sound like all that much compared to the monies we've been talking about this afternoon. The time, staff time, yes, that should be taken into consideration. But it's just such an important part of a community, and has so much historical value, and as John mentioned in the letter we received, got that, you know, they're already seeing the destruction of some of the older buildings, and it's sort of losing the whole vision of what the North Side was kind of all about, that warmth and welcoming part of Iowa City. And I just think it's really important we not lose sight of it and put it somewhere at some point very soon in our budget.
Yeah, I mean, my sense was when we talked about it last year, was that we were going to try and move into this as soon as we got the South Side done. I mean, we're going to try and go right into it, because we felt they were both very important. But the combination of money, but maybe even more importantly, staff capability, you know, to manage the two contracts.
One thing I think I heard staff say in the past is, having these different Form Based Codes is a little confusing. And so I'm not sure how that all, you know, plays in the mix. If there was a way to, I really don't understand the total process, but to combine them and then make it more simpler for, you know, sections that are North Side, South Side. I just know that I heard them saying that it was very, it's becoming a little complicated, as well as for staff to explain it, where to look for specific things, it's getting a little confusing. So I'm not, I just wanted to bring that up, because I know that it was mentioned here before us.
Jim, I just have a question. I know we all really want to get into the benches topic. Would it be possible for us to defer this conversation until after? Because Maz and I have one more.
I think we can finish this topic and move to the benches.
Okay. All right. So there's one more budget thing that Maz and I wanted to bring up, though. So my thought would be, is I would like to do a work session, so we, not a very long one, but a half hour, 45 minutes on this topic. I do think really what we're talking about with John is not really more than three to four blocks of area. There's really not that big of area in the North Market Square. So I would support that in terms of finding a way for a placeholder. I don't know whether we do a work session and modify, do a budget modification later. I think it's critical. And the thing is with waiting, my concern is, is there's a lot of projects potentially on the hopper, and we really need to get this done. So I would support that, but I'd also like to get a work session so we could more fully flesh this out, so we're not feeling rushed.
I'm okay with that.
When do we have to vote on the budget?
You'd really have to set the public hearing at your second meeting in February, just like you did with the assessor's budget. So you've got one more regularly scheduled council meeting, and if you want to have more discussions, it's probably going to be special meetings.
We can do a modification afterward. I know we don't like to do that. We can do that, can't we?
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, you can amend, you can amend your budget.
Because the other thing with Opticos, I love Opticos, but I don't know that we need the Cadillac. I mean, for crying out loud, prior to 1945, they made all of these naturally. So I'm hoping that we could evaluate that, so.
Yeah. All right. So...
I would like to go back to some of the other items that we had talked about before and just get some clarification.
Do you want to get this resolved first?
Okay, sorry.
Seems to me we should do that. So what I'm understanding is that there is support, majority support anyhow, for having a work session discussion about this, trying to find if it's, decide whether we want to and whether it's possible to actually develop a Form Based Code for that immediate one block and maybe immediately around it. I'm not sure what the boundaries would be. And that involves staff time, that involves the possibility of doing a request for proposals involving other firms, hopefully reducing the cost substantially.
Can you clarify the timing of the work session? Are you trying to do this before the budget, or is this a post-budget issue?
We could do post-budget, couldn't we, Jeff? I mean, we could modify the budget. I'd say post-budget.
If that's all right with me, if it's all right with you all.
Just add it to your pending list, then.
Sorry, Maz. Okay. All right, so I know you have topics, but would it be better to move to the benches, given the timing, and given the interest people have, and then we can return to this?
That's fine.
Yeah. Okay, so we're going to pick back up with the budget discussion after, probably after our work session, because I think the discussion about the benches will take some time. So the next item on our work session agenda is clarification of agenda items. And one of the agenda items is communications. That's item 9A. There are items, there are quite a few communications, emails and the like, to us about the PedMall benches. So I think this would be an appropriate time to talk about that and try to become clear about what our intentions are and what our direction to the staff would be. I want to say just a little bit about that, just for background, not a lot. I intend to say more during, at the start of the community comment period during our formal meeting. In this instance, I just want to get us to focus on the decision before us. Okay. So remember, we first encountered this topic in mid-December, after we had learned about concerns being expressed on social media, concerns about these new benches and how some of them, all of them, none of the new benches, all of the new benches had armrests in the center, and therefore, no one could lie down on them, especially homeless people. So that came to our attention. So we discussed that during our December 18 work session, and at that time, we instructed our city manager, Jeff, to report back to us about whether it is possible to install a meaningful fraction of benches at a reasonable cost. That's my translation of the direction, but I think it's very close. So Jeff's been collecting that information, and as directed, he has now provided us with a memo reporting what he found. And that memo appears in our information packet. I don't remember what the item number is.
Seven.
January 17th, item seven, in the January 17 information packet. According to that memo, we can ensure that anywhere from seven to 21 of all PedMall benches, that is 10 to 30% of all the benches, all in the whole PedMall, would have no armrests at a cost between 6,000 and 13 and a half thousand dollars. That's my condensed version of your memo, Jeff. You actually gave us an estimate about what it would cost to make sure all of the benches do not have armrests, including replacing all the 35 or so that had previously been installed. And that was like 150,000 or thereabouts. So would you like to add any detail to what I just said about, about your memo? Okay, so the question before us, really, is, do we want to, A, replace all the benches that have been installed, and then purchase new benches that would not have armrests, that would cost us about 150,000? Do we want to replace none, to have all the, all the benches have armrests and just proceed with what had originally been intended? Or to have some meaningful fraction, like 10% or 20% or 30%, et cetera, of all the benches to not have armrests? Okay, and the cost goes up just a little bit, step by step, from 10% to 20% to 30% until you get to the upper 40s, and then suddenly bam, there's a tipping point, and the cost goes up a lot. So do you folks have preferences?
Can I just ask a question before we make our preference? I want to ask, the 70 benches, all of them at the PedMall?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. And how many has been like really there right now?
33 have been installed. 37 are scheduled to be installed this, this upcoming construction season.
My understanding that the series seven had not been purchased yet.
Correct.
Then this means it's not going to cost us like additional money for the 37 because we can order them without arm.
Correct. So if we looked at the same style bench without the center armrest, we would pay a little bit of a higher price. So we locked in our prices on the benches a year ago when we bid this. Now when our contractor has gone on to, gone back to the bench manufacturer, to get that same bench without the armrest, we would pay a, a fraction more, so.
Can you tell me exactly how much more?
Yes, I can. You have to do some quick, quick math here because we have three different styles of benches. It would be $7,000 for one of the styles, $1,873.20 for the second style of bench, $1,238.40 for the third style of bench, so roughly $10,000. And that would, for your, for your Phase Two, that would do all those benches, those 37 benches without that center armrest. Those would all be located in the second phase. So as you can picture the completed Ped Mall, the benches that are installed right now with the armrest would all be where they're at now. And then between Black Hawk Mini Park and the two, the two College Street wings would all have the, the no arms. What we've suggested in the, what the pricing reflects on the percentages is that you'd probably want to intersperse those styles of benches. So part of the, part of the other costs that you see in the memo would be the labor to remove some of the existing benches that have been installed and replace, put those in Phase Two and then put some of the new benches that would be coming in, in the Phase One area too.
Now, that means as $5,900 for, for four, to take them out from there, right? To take them, actually, we're not going to take the whole, the whole thing because you're saying now Series Five, Series Three has been, you know, already on the Ped Mall, right? Half of this Series Three will be maybe taken from here to the, to the Phase Two. And the new one that we're going to order, which is Series Seven, will be without arm. So we can put like half of them here and half of them the other side.
Correct.
But how this is will make us pay 150 in this case.
So if you look at the memo, I'd key in on that, you know, you're looking at that 50/50 mark. That 47% is really that, that tipping point, as, as the mayor alluded to it. Once you get past that 47%, then some of the benches that we've already bought and installed, we no longer have a use for. We either have to put them somewhere else in the community or we have to, to sell them because we don't, we don't have a use for them. That's why that, that's why it jumps up so much after that number.
You mean if we replace the whole benches?
Correct.
Yeah.
That's why 47% is only 21,000, but if you want to replace all of them, it's 150 because all of a sudden we're buying 33 more benches than we anticipated at this outset of the project.
Jeff, where do the benchmark benches fall into those numbers? Because those are the ones you'd said that like the downtown district and maybe the painting project would continue. Are those included in those no-rail?
Our intention with the existing benchmark benches, those are the painted benches, would be to continue to sell those. We've been selling those on our GovDeals surplus auction site. The benches, what the intention is with the Ped Mall plan is that we would continue that painting partnership with the Iowa City Downtown District, but it would be concentrated to the wing of the Ped Mall. That's basically the library playground area there. And so the new benches that get installed in that area, they'd be brand-new benches, but they would still be able to be painted on by the local artists.
But it's a different style than?
It's a different style bench, yeah.
Right, right. Correct. Thank you.
One, on that particular issue, one suggestion that, that I'm interested in putting forth is keeping the existing benches which have been, that are currently part of the benchmark program. I think there are 17 benches out there now. And just simply including them in, in the design of the Ped Mall so that we don't, we, we would just simply be using those. We wouldn't need to order the full, what Jeff was just saying, 37 are to be purchased. We would need to purchase 20 rather than 37. So there would, I suspect there would be a cost savings on that. The other, the other thing that supports using the existing benches is the, the new benches, the one that is, is the bench that would replace the existing benchmark bench has a very wide gap between the seat and the back. It's the plainwell bench if you're familiar with the designs of the, the two bench types. So there would, there wouldn't be the continuous surface for the artwork to be incorporated on. So in that sense, when I, when I look at the existing benches and see how well-adapted they are to the benchmark program, that combined with the fact that it would reduce the number of benches that we have to order, I'm also sensing that some of the comments I'm hearing from the community is they really like those benches. They are quite comfortable. So for, for a number of reasons, the last of which I will mention is the gap. The gap, I was looking at this over the weekend and in terms of the standards of the U.S. Access Board, which addresses issues of accessibility, one of their bench specifications is that the gap should not exceed two inches. And I haven't put in the tape measure to that gap, but I think it's roughly, I want to say about six inches, so. And we, we also received a letter from, from a resident who said that, you know, young children may have issues with that gap anyway in terms of, you know, possibly things falling through the gap, whether it's stuff or their own bodies. So it seems to me that on a number of fronts, as a starting point in this conversation anyway, if we keep the existing benchmarks that we still have, it should, they're, they're without a mid-arm, so they already satisfy that need. They could reduce the cost. I think they're better suited for the benchmark program and they're comfortable and don't have the gap.
Do you know how many of them there are?
17.
17? Yeah, I, I really agree with you on that. Just like when I mentioned, when, when you're looking at the old benches and the new benches, the old benches is longer and that the new one, I guess, is a little shorter. And also, you know, the, the, those are very, the, the old one is very comfortable and even though it's this design on them, they look really nice. I agree that we should keep them.
How much would that cost, Jeff, if we just kept them? I mean, would there be a cancellation fee associated with a change order?
Scott, Scott Sovers is the project engineer.
Yeah, so I think there'd be a cost to remove and then reinstall the existing benches. So there's going to be incremental costs there. The other thing that we probably want to keep in mind too is some of those benches are not in the greatest shape. Phase One, when we took some of those out, they basically fell apart. So we may have to take a look at which ones can actually be reused.
But that'd be a relatively minor cost in terms of the installation?
I would think so.
Would there be a cancellation fee in relation to the new ones that would have gone there?
Yeah. I mean, it'd be.
But that would be a minimum too.
Yeah, yep.
I think there is clear support within the community to retain some of the older benches. Perhaps we should do that, but you know, I heard just what Scott said and I had understood that some or maybe even all of the older benches aren't really in good enough condition to retain. But if they can be, I think there'd be clear community support for that. That said, we still would need to consider whether to install some of the newly purchased, the, the benches we're going to purchase, to install some that don't have armrests in other parts of the mall so that there is dispersion throughout the mall. And I, my personal sense is that there's no need to have a large fraction of the, all the benches to, to achieve that. My language is getting messed up here. I, I think somewhere between 10 and 20% of all the benches should be without armrests in the center. That seems to me to be in the ballpark and at a reasonable cost as well. And maybe by doing the, retaining some of the older benches, we can accomplish that more easily. So I, I don't know what you all think about that, so.
I thought, yeah, I thought 20% would be reasonable because the numbers were seven and seven, which is 14, and that, that seemed like a reasonable number. And then if we retain some of the original benchmark benches to add to those numbers, I would think that would, that would be good, a good solution.
One, one thing I would also add, you know, as, as I think most of you know, and I'm probably not most of the public, but you know, this is, this was the work that I did for many years designing parks and open spaces. And the way, the way I have viewed this issue, which has gotten so much response, is that it's fundamentally a question of choice and providing opportunities, not just for the homeless, but for the entire population. And so the way I, the way I've tried to evaluate this is what are the benefits of the mid-arm and what are the disadvantages of having the mid-arm? And the mid-arm does affect more, you know, certain kinds of behaviors other than stretching out. It's more than that. I mean, there are, you know, opportunities where you're sitting, if you're in a family with your child and the child, as we were saying, is, doesn't necessarily sit face-forward. They can sprawl out. You have your stuff that you bring as a family. So in my view, the, the benches without arms are addressing a fair number of scenarios that one can see, especially around the play area where you do have more likely larger groups and families which need to be accommodated with what we're providing. So another, what that translates to me is something in terms of these percentages, something closer to 30%. I think, I think just replacing the existing, you know, reusing the existing benches would put us over 20%. On the other hand, the other thing pushing on me is I don't want to spend a lot of extra money on this project. So, you know, it's, it's, I think we may need a little bit more follow-up information, but I think we can have our cake and eat it too on this without adding a significant amount of cost to it.
Well, I would hope we get to a point where we have clarity so that the public understands what we've decided. I don't want a lot of ambivalence about what we're doing.
For me, I really think we need to do like 50% because I always thinks all the people in the city, they beg for those benches. And by looking at the, all the emails and the people who say, yes, keep the armrests and the people who say, no, don't keep them, I think we need to do 50/50. All of them are taxpayer and we have to, we cannot satisfy everyone, but we try as much as we can to satisfy the public. So I think this should be 50/50 and will cost us around $21,000, which is reasonable for the mistake that had been done, so we didn't look to this closely. And maybe that's what I really believe. 50/50. 50 with arm, 50 with not, especially 21,000 is not that much for, yes, to satisfy our people who begging for these benches.
Just to be clear, I don't think we made a mistake. I think we have an opportunity to make a mid-course correction after having gotten some feedback from the public. I honor the public's views. We've gotten feedback. We're taking that into account. I don't think we made a mistake.
Okay, I'm going to take out "we." I made a mistake because I did not look at those benches when they, they, you know, put this plan for us forward. I did not look to them closely. Maybe if I did, I will really raise the concern, but I did not and I think that's my mistake and we need to do this.
What I would like to see us do is if there are some of the current benches that are in good enough shape to be reused, I'd like to see us keep those. I think there is a lot of interest in those. I, I think part of that interest is people maybe don't realize that the new benches are also going to be painted and are part of, you know, part of the art project which will, and so I think that may be part of the reason some people are speaking pretty strongly. But I do think the different design in terms of the comfort level and not having the gap in them is for, especially for children, I think is a positive. Given that, and I guess depending upon how many of those are determined to be suitable for continued use, then what I would suggest is we, we continue with the order of the others the way they're already set. I think what I guess frustrates me a little bit with this is I, I think, I think what has, has come up is, is a solution to a problem that doesn't really exist. When we look at the reports from, and nobody's really brought this up in the discussion, so I'm going to get it out front and center. I mean, you talk to our police that are down there, we basically have no homeless people sleeping down there. We've put millions of dollars and continue to in terms of what I would consider to be real services to benefit the homeless and to be proud of having benches that they can sleep on. I'm not proud of that. I want to do a whole lot better for our homeless and that's what we are doing in this community. But if we keep some of those that are reusable, I think that's a reasonable way to go. And, and I would also point, and most people have not seen this, I think some of the council members have had a chance to look at it, but it came in late today, from Katie Gerlock with Shelter House. And I think when you start looking at these percentage of benches and you, you talk about the kind of service that you want to give, you know, with the prices that were in the staff memo, 10%, roughly $6,000, that rent, that is rent and utilities in a two-bedroom apartment for six months for a family of four. I'd rather spend that $6,000 helping that family of four for six months than replacing 10% of the benches. 20% rent and utilities in a four-bedroom home for six months for a family of seven. To me, that's a whole lot better use of $10,000 than replacing a few benches that people are not even sleeping on. 30%, five households, single adult or family, help through rapid rehousing, rental assistance, security deposits and rental payments, average of $3,000 per household. And there's more in here. I think this is just a compelling argument that everybody should look at of where are we spending our money and how is it truly benefiting the homeless individuals? And to me, it is not in giving them a bench to sleep on. A number of the homeless people have said they won't sleep down there because they, quite frankly, are scared to be down there when the bars let out. Because you have drunk people coming out of the bars that harass them, that steal their stuff. That is not where they want to be. I would also say equating conversations that this council had in 2013 with the discussions that we had in the past year with the redesign of the Ped Mall are two very different, two very different points in time and two very different sets of circumstances. We were dealing with synthetic drugs downtown, which were causing a huge problem for the homeless and aggravating their behaviors. Since then, we've, we've put police downtown who have made great connections handing out socks, underwear, referring individuals to assistance. We've opened up the winter shelter. We are doing truly beneficial things to these, for, for these individuals to help them and to connect them with services. And so benches, they're not on the top of my priority list, but I'm certainly willing to say, let's keep the ones that are there that are structurally sound and reusable and then continue with the new ones.
All right. I want to get us to a decision.
I haven't had a chance to comment yet. Yeah. But I'd like to, I would like to elucidate that, yeah. So very quickly, I think really what we're dealing here with is a basic moral question. And that question is, is where do members of our community belong and are they welcome downtown? And I think what we're looking at is this bar is not only, we don't need, need to think about it only literally, but it's also a metaphor. I think our greatest fear is, is that downtown is becoming a gated community and we don't want that. And we want to make sure that we demonstrate literally that everyone is welcome in our downtown. I agree with you, Susan, there were very complicated discussions that happened four years ago. I totally understand that and I don't want to impugn those decisions that were made. I also agree with you that I do think, what do we say morally if we're saying that we as a city want you to sleep on the benches? I, I do think that is a legitimate issue. I have though, I work downtown. I do see people sleeping on the benches in, in dire circumstances. I've seen it multiple times. It continues to happen. It is an issue. So Jim, to your point, to sort of wrap up this issue, I would support 20% plus, which would be 20% of the, the replacement, plus to evaluate on a case-by-case basis the existing painted benches that we have down there. And then to also consider the remaining 10,000 that we would have done to get up to that 50% to do an additional contribution to Shelter House, a little bit beyond the, the conversation. But I think they have done terrific progress. Susan, you in particular have done wonderful progress on our, on our facility that we want to do for the access center. do for the access center. So, that's where I am, 20-plus downtown.
That sounds like a pretty reasonable suggestion to me. I don't know about the rest of you.
I agree. Bruce?
Yeah, I do want to make a comment, and I know we want to move this along, but also take time to make sure that we've addressed the public. I hear what Rockney said. It really is, we're talking about homeless people. We want to make, because that's how all this came about, we're talking about the homeless. There's, we're definitely wanting to make sure that there is a place for them. Again, as Susan said, a bench in the Ped Mall isn't where I want to see the homeless. I would love to see us really figure out sustainable solutions for people in our community that are homeless. And when we're talking about benches, I mean, our discussion should be different in relationship to the homeless. And I heard someone, you know, talk about the data, and Rockney, I hear what you're saying, that you've seen people downtown. Now, there is some data, where it's point-in-time data that is conducted twice a year, and that data came back with 0% of people sleeping downtown at night in the Ped Mall. So, now, I'm sure at times there are people down there at night. I think some of the individuals that are homeless, they do want to be where there are shelter, where they can not be exposed to the elements, because if you're on the bench, you know, you're exposed. So, I think they choose to go under bridges, where, as well as places where their items can be safe and not exposed to the public. Personally, I am not in favor of increasing the budget for the benches. I am more in favor of finding another solution where we can place money, if it has taken $5,000, $10,000, whatever the case may be, to find, you know, put it towards something that will really go to the real issue and the real solutions. That's what I'm in favor of. 20%, 10%, 47%. For me, that is not addressing the real issue. And so, I want to talk about the real issue, you know, and that's not what we're, we're talking about benches right now, but in the future, that's what I would like to address as the real issue. And so, for me, supporting and putting more money towards the benches is not what I want to do.
I agree with you, Bruce, because personally, I don't think we should have people sleeping under the bridges, and we do. And on that point, I wanted to give kudos to our police department, because from what I've heard, when we're in these sub-zero temperatures, they go out and seek these people out under these bridges and get them to the Shelter House or our wet shelter. So, they've done a marvelous job with that. But that's where we should be concerned. We shouldn't have these folks living under the bridges either.
Well, I got to tell you, I don't understand where, I don't know where that leaves us, because I'm hearing like six different perspectives. Okay?
I think I just heard Bruce say he doesn't want to spend any more money.
That's what I heard. Mazza here wants to do 50/50.
I agree 20%.
But he said no more money. 20% is more money.
Right, I agree 20%.
Oh, okay. So, you agree with what Rockney suggested?
Originally supposed to 20%.
John, have you expressed a view?
Yeah, well, it would be roughly 30% is what I'm.
The combination of.
Yeah, a combination of reusing the existing and, I don't know what that would.
It could be as low as 20, it could be as high as 20 plus another 17 benches, you know, all 17 of the existing paint mark, no, is it benchmark benches?
But they said this is not in good shape. How many of them are in good shape?
I'm just giving a maximum.
So, you're agreeing with me, John, correct? You're agreeing with me 20% plus, evaluating a case-by-case basis?
Yeah, that would probably translate.
Can you just tell us how many benches in good shape?
Yeah, in the original design, we didn't evaluate the condition of these existing benches, so we'll have to do that. So, I, off the top of my head, I don't know, but that's definitely something we can do.
And to be clear, the further part of Rockney's suggestion was $10,000 to the Shelter House to help with their homeless activities, their activities focused on homeless people.
Do we have four for that?
Are there four in favor of that?
I'm in favor of that.
I count one, I count two, I count three, I count four.
Yeah, I would just again want to say, I am really not viewing this as, it has been framed as a homeless issue, and the way I view it is choice for everyone, and that's the way we should be looking at the armrests. And it's not simply the homeless who are impacted by the benches having a mid-arm. They're just, there are restrictions. You're defining the space in a smaller increment.
Exactly.
So, I think it's really unfortunate that it's become so focused on one segment of the population that we're all concerned with, all doing a great job trying to address. This is a public space where we're talking about everyone of all different sizes and ages, trying to be accommodated on the benches.
Yeah, I'm aware of quite a few people who actually like to lie down on benches.
Yeah.
Some of them are really close to me, like myself. I do that periodically. So, it's a good thing.
A parent with child?
Yeah, I do want to clarify. Didn't I mention that I was in favor of keeping the 17 benches that are already there, for that reason? And so, it could accommodate everybody.
Okay, I think we have a majority decision here.
On the $10,000, do we? We do on the $10,000 to Shelter House as well?
Well, 10?
I'm supportive. Are you in supportive? Are you supportive?
Absolutely.
Five for that.
Okay.
Okay.
Didn't say anything.
All right, so it's about 20, too?
Mayor, I just need some clarification. The 20% figure, is that just the replacement figure, or is that, is that on top of saving as many benches as we can?
20-plus. So, we save the 20, which is the option two, plus you evaluate on a case-by-case basis the existing painted benches.
So, it's like 14 new benches that do not have armrests, whether they be newly purchased or ones that we've just installed, right? You're tracking me there, Jeff?
Yes.
Plus, whatever number of the 17 existing paint mark benches can be saved because they're in good shape, then we would want to continue using them.
Okay. Does council want to, do you want us to come back to you, and do you want to place these benches? Do you want us to place them? I'm serious about that, because we're going to have very distinct styles of benches, and there's going to be a lot of focus on where the benchmarks go and where the new ones go.
Personally, I would, my starting point would be concentrating the restoration, the benchmarks in the vicinity of the children's play area. I think that's where they would have the most benefit for those reasons I was describing. I think it would also concentrate what I consider to be all the elements that we associate with Iowa City, namely, you know, the local art, the play area, you know, that's down there for the children, the fountain, the library. These are all community-oriented programmatic elements that are, that share that part of the Ped Mall. And I think the benchmarks, you know, would be appropriate there. In fact, that was the intent, I think, with the plan, of concentrating them around the play area.
I'd agree with John. Okay.
Sound reasonable?
Sounds reasonable.
All right. So, let's continue to be reasonable and take a break. Return to the work session after the formal meeting, and we'll pick up with our discussion about budget items. We were discussing the budget, and we had gone through three items. I think there may have been one or two other items that people wanted to bring up, so please do.
Yeah, I wanted to, we'd kind of talked about a list of things and how much was going to be out of that $2.95 million, and then how much was going to be for the facility reserve. And you had asked me, Jim, last time, kind of, you know, what I was thinking about in terms of, without having really looked at all the numbers, I had said $2 million. So, I've got a couple of things here as we go through these. As a majority of the council agreed to add $350,000 to the affordable housing budget above what the staff had recommended. When we did this last year, similar thing, one of the things that we did was we made that contingent upon getting our full backfill from the state. And I think that is a very reasonable way to do that again this year. So, that's my first point.
Yeah, I don't know what others think. It's my understanding we're in a budget, better budget position than we were last year. Jeff knows this way better than I do, but that's my understanding.
Yeah, these would be, I mean, our reserve surplus that we're working with was certainly larger than it was last year. We were more dependent on the backfill last year. That's accurate.
And I think that that was a position that I had made that was already defeated, correct? I had made that exact proposal. I'd wanted to do that million contingent upon the backfill, and I think we already rejected that, didn't we?
I don't recall discussing it.
I don't recall that.
Not this time. Last time around, we did.
Well, that's what I thought I did, but maybe I did.
Well, I agree with you, Rockney.
Yeah, well, we got defeated, though, was the point.
We have two.
We have two.
But I think the point is it's done, so I don't think.
I do. I think, I mean, again, we're talking about, you know, reserves, we're talking about other things that we need to do. So, I guess I would throw that out. I think the $350 should be contingent on the backfill.
Well, is there a majority that supports what Susan's just recommended? I think I'd add one other thing. I think we're in a better financial position for the budget this year than we were, or the forthcoming budget, than we were last year. So, that's one thing. And so, that kind of flips my concern. Last year, we had to do, make it on, make the increase contingent. This time, I think, okay, well, if we see we're going to be in a problem, we'll cut wherever we need to cut. But I don't expect that to happen at all.
Jeff, have we heard anything from the state legislators in terms of that? It doesn't seem like I'm hearing as much about it.
I fully expect it'll come up. It was nice that the governor's budget did, fully funded backfill. That was, that was nice to see. But as priorities are bounced around in Des Moines, I'm pretty sure we'll see some of the, some of last year's proposals resurface. And again, they were negotiating something on the last day of the session last year that most people thought was going to get passed, and it fell apart at the last hour. So, I think it'll come up. Now, what we saw last year was a phase-out. There wasn't serious proposals to just cut us off, but it would probably be phased out over a period of two, three, five years.
Okay. Then, the other things that I had, just to kind of confirm, I think, our agreements, we had all agreed then to the $140,000 for the South District housing. That was basically coming out of that $2.95. We just agreed that the $150,000 for Delray is not going to come out of that $2.95. That's coming out of the land banking funds. We got $100,000 for the solar at Terry True Blood. We had agreed on $450,000 to put the emergency reserve back at $5 million. And so, that would leave us with $1.91 million for the facility reserve, and that's what I would propose.
I think that's the situation we're in, isn't it? That's consistent with the decisions we've made, I think, so far.
Is that all you have to say, Susan? Okay. So, following up on Mazza here's discussions about contingency planning for unexpected expenses and opportunities that we have over the course of a year, one of the things that I wanted to evaluate is not necessarily an affordable housing addition fund per se, but that essentially we would set aside, we had a discussion with the Lytec project a couple of weeks ago, about $200,000 for additional affordable housing funding to allow greater density in that particular unit. That ultimately was rejected, but I think something Jeff had said sort of intrigued me, which would be, there could be other more effective ways to utilize some of those affordable housing dollar funds. And the second piece is, is for purposes of transportation. Transportation has been a big topic of discussion. We've talked about adding Sunday bus service. I think we've made, in my view, the wise decision not to go forward with expanding Sunday bus service while we are in the process of doing the planning study. And so, what I'd like to propose is that we evaluate possibly up to $200,000. That would be a council justice fund that we would be able to keep in reserve for the types of contingencies that we saw for $150,000, whether it be affordable housing or transportation. So, wouldn't necessarily, that's something we would look at possibly proposing. So, I don't know what people think about that, or, because I think Maz brings up a really good point, that we need to bring up contingency planning for our social justice needs. What are the opportunities that could come up throughout the year that we would then be able to tap this fund for this unexpected contingencies, whether it be in transportation or affordable housing? So, for example, on Sunday bus service, one of the things I was hoping we would get would be a more particular proposal from either the public or maybe from staff about a possible interim solution involving vouchers. We don't have a well-fleshed-out policy for like a Sunday transportation policy, but this would give us some funding flexibility if we get the right proposal. And if we don't get the right proposal, then it would essentially just revert presumably into general funds. So, that's what I would like to propose.
With regard to your last point, Rockney, I think I'm expecting to see something come to us, so why don't you say a little bit about that?
Yeah, and the interim Sunday service, you had asked us to look at that as staff, and you also put a call out to the community if you have ideas. North Liberty is currently working through a taxi service proposal, and they've shared with us the proposal that they're working on, so we're looking at that. And then barring weather cancellations this week, I know our transportation services staff is having a meeting with Horizons that provide, they provide some Sunday and late-night transportation services in Cedar Rapids. So, we are exploring that. We're not in a position to come back and report, but both of those would be interim steps, I think, as you characterize it, knowing that the long-term was going to be studied with this plan.
And presumably, there'd be a cost associated with that.
What would the funding parameters of that be? Do we know?
Well, I think we touched on this briefly during the Saturday budget work session. The transit fund currently operates at a surplus, $300,000, $400,000 a year, I believe roughly. Those are funds that we have been setting aside for federal match for facility replacement. But we do have flexibility within that fund to shift some of those over to operations if needed. And then, as we talked about before, if that subsidy were to come from the general fund, we would either tap our reserves or our contingency. And I just want to distinguish those. The reserves are kind of that savings account that we keep from year, you know, year over year. And then the contingency is the 1% figure, which is 580, I believe, right now. That just comes up for the, that's what Dennis talked about earlier, you know, that's probably where we'll pay the $10,000 to Shelter House. Just those unplanned expenses that come up will amend the budget, and that contingency will shrink to cover those unintended. So, there's a possibility of using those funds, too.
I think, I think if we've got 500-something in contingency, it would seem to me that that gives us an awful lot to be able to use if there's something, you know, that really comes up that we really want to do. My concern is if you set a specific budget item for that amount, it becomes a target for everybody to want to spend, and maybe you don't, maybe you don't end up making the best decisions because people just want to spend it. The other thing that I think is really important that we keep in mind is we're going to have HCDC coming to us.
Yeah.
And, I mean, their memo, well, their memo said hundreds of thousands of dollars. Now, I'm not saying that we're going to do that, or that we'll feel we can do that, but we also, in that regard, you already have nonprofit agencies doing a lot of really good work that I would say are justice work within the community.
Crisis centers.
That might be the first direction we would want to go. So, to me, with already having that 580,000 or whatever it is in the contingency, that 1%, and knowing that HCDC is coming to us, I would prefer to go that way.
I guess what I mentioned, Jamie, you told me earlier when I said the, I don't even know how to pronounce that word, but the fund for 580. When I said there is fund, you clearly said, this is fund just for like emergency, unless we have a fire in the city or something like that, we're going to use it. And now you're telling me we can use it for social justice fund, and we cannot use it for, to give the city in Boloi, you know, benefit? I really don't understand. When I say something, you come up with something, and now they come up with something completely different? Why are you guys undermining me? And you saying something, and they say something else?
I haven't said a word with regard to this topic right now.
No, you said, no, I'm talking about early. You said clearly, I'm going to go and look at the table and just record that for you. When I says there is 500, you said this is emergency, and this is only if like something like a fire come up on the city, we don't have to use it unless for emergency. That's what you said. And now those people, they say, no, that's fund is for everything.
Maybe I can, maybe I can help explain and distinguish those two different things. When you're talking about using funds for salaries, now all of a sudden, that's, there's no, there's not a contingency there, because those funds are really earmarked not only for that year, but for the next several years. So, you've in fact shifted from a contingency model to an operational model. When we're talking about one-time funds, whether it's $10,000 to the Shelter House or $200 for a to-be-determined opportunity, if any exists, those are one-times, you know, particularly with that $200, you wouldn't necessarily be making that commitment for two, three, four years like you would with an employee's salary.
He did not explain it that way. That was bothering me while I'm like. He did not explain it that way. That was bothering me while I'm like, like proving my point and telling that, and you just shut me down by, oh, because I really don't know what that fund for. I never heard about it, and nobody told me about it. We never talk about it. But you really said that clearly, that make me feel like, oh, I'm really stupid. How come we're going to use something for really emergency for that? And now, when we said, okay, we need fund for justice, and for that, they start saying, oh, we have that money, we can use it for that.
I guess what I would say is, I think Jim was using the emergency as an, as an example. And maybe, please let me finish.
He changed it right now. He said, you can use it here, and you can use it there.
What I was saying was, I think Jim was using that as an example of something that we might use contingency for. And I can see where if somebody did not fully understand what a contingency fund is, they might misunderstand that. I would also say, I do not believe that as a one-of-seven council members, that any one of us is making any attempt to undermine anything that you are doing or saying. There are going to be agreements, and there are going to be disagreements in a council of seven. And we all have that opportunity to express them. I have not ever had any conversation with any of my fellow council members, nor have I ever felt myself that I was trying to do anything to undermine any other council member. I will disagree. I will express my views, as we all do, and we all should. That's what we're elected to do. But I don't feel that there is any effort to undermine any councillor sitting up here.
I think though, Mazza here's...
I will always say what I feel, regardless you accept it or not.
But I think, though, that only underscores the need to have something that is sort of not earmarked, but more generally, more guidance and focused in terms of a justice contingency in the transportation, affordable housing areas. And maybe we could further develop that later on, but that was why I'm making that proposal. Do I have support for that proposal?
I support what you propose. I hate to be disappointed again, but I support what you propose, and I think we need fund to be allocated there for, for like council justice fund, to do whatever we want to do, if it's something coming in the future. That, what I believe.
Well, we do have something coming our way. As Susan noted, the Housing and Community Development Commission is sending us recommendations to commit another roughly $350,000 to a whole series of agencies that are doing very important work in this city. That's a new request for us to commit $350,000. I think we will take that request very seriously, because these are really important agencies. But we can't keep saying yes to everything that comes our way. We have to make judgments, and some people make certain judgments, other people make other judgments, and then we look for the number four or more. That's what determines what the decision is.
I said what I see, and as a people can see, I always not, don't get support, that's fine.
Maz, when we did, when the budget originally had $650,000 in it for affordable housing, you wanted $1 million. What did we do?
Oh, I want it. You guys don't want it?
No. Maz, you wanted us to put $1 million into it, and we did.
You always also propose something, you want it, and we, we will agree with you. Why not? I'm here just like you guys.
Sometimes, and sometimes not. That is the way...
Yeah, that's fine. Did I say something? I just said, you don't have to tell me something? It's not like really the whole information. You should tell me everything about the, the fund, not you say something bad and to shut me down.
So for me, the, you know, the proposal made by Rockne, the $200,000, which can go for council justice fund, opportunity fund, however we name it. I want to acknowledge this council efforts for affordable housing and the justice programs that we're already doing. A lot of them are not even in the, not even in the 2.5, 2.95 million that we're considering. And so for me, even though I, I would love to support the $200,000, for me, I, you know, say I would support it if there is councillors that would support it, but immediately, if there's not four, I just, you know, draw that support back. For me, I think we've done, we've, we've done some things. We will love to do more, but I don't know that it's worth pressing the issue from my perspective. I think, you know, the, there's things that's going to come before us in the future. You know, there's, of course, you know, I didn't really prefer that we use the land banking, but, you know, that's okay. We can, you know, we can get to some of that stuff in the future. So for me, the $200,000 justice fund, I think any projects that we want, whether there's a justice fund or not, we can bring it to the council, we can present our case, and there's ways to fund it, if that is something that we really want to do. So for me, I don't know that I would push this issue.
So we have two people in favor of your recommendation so far, and three people opposed. I don't know what John and Pauline think.
From what I'm hearing, I think, I think your concern of transportation and affordable housing, we have reserves, we have reserves in various locations where if something should arise, we can pull from it. I think, you know, I do believe this council has social justice issues at the forefront, so I'm, I'm not concerned that should something arise, that we'll, we'll pay attention to it.
So that's basically a no. All right.
Although I appreciate your sentiment and where it's coming from, I think, over the past few years, I've noticed that when there is something that we truly, really want and believe in, we've been able to, thanks to Dennis and, and other city staff, to be able to figure out how we're going to fund it, and we have come up with that. And, and so I think we just continue that way we have, and with what we have, although it's an excellent idea.
Okay. Are there any other suggestions with regard to the budget? Okay, hearing none. The next item is clarification of agenda items. Of course, we've already gone through the agenda, but there, there was at least one thing I wanted to very briefly mention.
Can I just suggest something?
Sure.
Because some people are waiting here for the food cart. Can we go down there and come back to the rest of the agenda?
Okay. We could do that. I don't see why not. That, I know people have been very patient, unbelievably patient, actually. Good grief. Yeah, so let me find where that is, Maz. On my notes anyhow. This would be in the information packet of the, item nine of the January 19th, 17th?
Seventeenth.
Information packet, right? Okay, I'm trying to get there. Item nine, item nine's down there somewhere. Okay, item eight.
Like page 81?
Yeah. No, I'm doing it differently. I'm looking at my own notes. Okay. Yeah, so we, I know staff needs direction on this. So Simon, are you going to summarize what's being recommended?
Absolutely.
All right, please do.
First of all, Simon Andrew, Assistant to the City Manager. Why this is becoming, coming before you now is the current permits run through April 30th. So if we do want to change city code, or revisit the program broadly, we'll want to get the code change done by then. So that's why we're looking for direction now. To break down the recommendation into two separate pieces, might make your decision a little bit easier. First piece of it is recommending extending the four current permits through 2019, through December 22nd, 2019, which would put it after the fall semester graduation. So getting the full semester in for this year's business. That would not only give us more time to react, but would also take into account the last phase of the PedMall project. We found that last year during the PedMall project, finding space for the four current vendors was very challenging. So that's the first piece of the recommendation. After that, staff recommends that the program go away after December 22nd of this year. The vending started on the PedMall many years ago. It was originally introduced as a venue for temporary vending. They were year-by-year permits. It wasn't all food vendors. It was the goal of which to create a more vibrant streetscape downtown for more daytime vending options. And initially, staff regulated both the hours and menus of food carts downtown. We would send staff out every afternoon to make sure that folks were vending, and make sure that their menus matched what was on their application. Again, the goal of which to give more of that vibrant streetscape feel. What we've seen in the intervening years, especially after we drew back from regulating hours and menus, we didn't find that it was a very efficient use of staff time to be going out there on a regular basis and citing vendors. We found that they serve almost exclusively the late-night bar crowd. And so it got very much away from the original intent of the program, more of that daytime, the streetscape vibrancy, and more small business, kind of get-your-foot-in-the-door type of temporary opportunities to serving that bar crowd. And we've found also in those intervening years, that a number of changes city council has made to the use of public space downtown really gets more at those original intents of the program, such as the street cafes. There are food trucks allowed downtown, not on the PedMall or directly adjacent to it, but certainly many more vending opportunities in the intervening years. And so that was the basis of staff's recommendation. We've dwindled from a peak of eight permits. We're down to four, owned by two separate companies currently. And so at the close of this three-year permit cycle, if we do intend to make changes, now's the time to do it. And discuss that before the April 30th deadline of the current permits running up. One other piece of background, we used to do these annually, and we used to have many more applicants than we had spots. And so it was really understood that this was year-by-year, that you were not guaranteed a spot next year. What we found was, at 2012, when we were going through that permit process, the city was sued by one of the vendors who wasn't selected, and we pulled seniority out of the decision-making process for reviewing applications. In exchange for pulling out seniority, recognizing that there are upfront costs to starting this business, we went from a one-year to a three-year permit cycle. And we're very clear with vendors at that point that there's no guarantee that after three years, you will have a spot, this is public space, and city council may choose to go a different route with it when they wish to. So that's where we landed today. At the end of the day, not meeting the original intent of the program, some administrative costs, that can be burdensome to staff, and also, we want to see the PedMall clear out after the bars close, and not be policing folks waiting in line. There are a number of other rationale in that memo, and I'd be happy to answer.
Sure. Just in private, want to ask Simon any questions?
Simon, I'm not buying the public safety rationale. Has there been one instance in which there's been a problem associated with standing in line? I mean, has there been any assaults? And do we have specific data? How much time extra are people congregating by reason of the food carts being present?
Sure, sure. And I don't want to imply that there have been any public safety incidents directly related to the carts. I would say that it's more broader issue that a police officer policing the PedMall at 1:32 a.m., where there are hundreds of people around, would prefer those groups to break off into smaller groups, and either go home, go to restaurants, go elsewhere, and not be staying on the PedMall. But no, I don't have any specific data as to minutes or numbers of people, but I did speak to Chief Matherley about this, and he echoed the same thing, that, you know, we don't, we can't tie any specific incidents to this, or nor would we want to. But in general, after the bars close, we want to see people go home.
Wouldn't that then support us if we wanted to make, address that issue, to essentially have the permit expire earlier, like 1 o'clock?
Sure. And that's something, that if we do want to continue the program, that is a change that I would recommend making. We do cut off the food trucks, I believe, at 9:00 or 10:00 p.m. And that was the logic when we introduced the food truck program as well, is that not having that congregation at bar close is the most desirable. I would say that any one of the points in the memo can be corrected with a more minor code amendment. I would say that overall, in totality, really, we're not meeting the intent of the program, and so therefore, I think we should revisit it broadly, rather than extending three-year permits.
How long this food truck been going on?
Food carts on the PedMall, probably 20 years. I think that grilled cheese started late 90s, 2000?
Twenty years, 20 years, for us, or 35.
And during these 20 years, all the time, they will mostly use them after, after they get out, I guess, from clubs, and they, yes, I guess, as a restaurant will be closed, and they cannot find food, and they just go to this cart and buy food. I understand that the police have a concern about people staying there, like a lot of people, but have they done something, like really problem there? Is the problem has been reported, like...
Certainly, again, the problem in terms of that is not the food carts or their operations whatsoever. And again, to Rockne's point, if we cut off the permit, say at midnight, then that concern does go away. It's, it's more broadly that we don't want hundreds of people on the PedMall after bar close.
I really don't think even...
Oh, sorry.
To cut it away will be like really solution, because most of their customer, I guess, will come after, after the bar. That's, that's the time exactly they make money during that time. How come we're going to cut the hours? As long as it's not really creating problem. And we just was talking about, we need like, what is called, license kitchen for the people, so they can cook there and sell their food. We are even trying to make like more food cart, like, I guess, like at the Center for Work, just as we have a project, it called like, do your, like, I guess, own your small business or something like that. Why, we encourage people to just cook if they are really good on that, and just do like sell their food through food truck, and something like food cart, I mean. And what we are really asking the city manager even to do, I was trying to propose a license kitchen at the, you know, the recreation center, and after that, we found out we can do that, the senior center. All this, why we doing that? Because we want to encourage the community, the low-income people, to, to do that, and just cook there, and maybe sell their food. And...
Absolutely. And, and that was alluded to in the memo. What we haven't seen is this program being used by new startups, small businesses, looking to get a foothold in the market. What we have seen is it's the same food carts year after year, and not introducing a new business. I, I think that overall, we've seen the most success with food carts with our temporary use permits. There is a Mexican restaurant on the Highway 6, I believe, that started as a food cart, and then became a brick-and-mortar location.
Yes.
We would like to see more of those temporary installations, the pop-ups, the, you know, starting out at festivals, things like that, rather than the same cart using the public space year after year.
But this is really coming down the road. I'm going to share you, because at the Center for Work, just we have a campaign, and we are doing that. We send all those people to the event that the city, I guess, Tracy Hayes just had it at the Kirkwood Community College, to teach the people how they can open their businesses. And one of the option was a food cart. And all the people, they came there by all this idea, and they said, hey, they said we can start like small with a food cart. You know, we, we just like helping those people now to learn and to just, you know, how to save money, to budget this, and everything.
Absolutely.
But it's coming on the way. That's why I really want to see this program continue.
That's what I was going to ask Simon, is what are we doing as, as a city to reach out to, to new businesses?
Sure.
How do they know that that's even a possibility?
Sure, absolutely. That was a strong focus of the Building Business Basics. They get a lot of interest from folks looking, looking to start restaurants or food carts. The main way that we see food carts throughout the city used outside of the PedMall vendors is through temporary use permits. So you'll see them in parking lots. You know, this is when somebody sells produce, say, out of a truck, sweet corn, that's a temporary use permit. The, the Mexican restaurant that I mentioned started as a food cart that operated, I believe, from Hy-Vee's parking lot, maybe. But that program will continue. And that's where we have seen some success with people starting new small businesses. You know, as we just noted, the grilled cheese cart has been on the PedMall for, you know, 20 years, and we haven't seen that being used by new businesses getting into the market, nor have we seen that move into a, a permanent location. So I think that there are better ways, whether it's the temporary use permit, that we will still continue to have special events, other ways to, to make that happen, to encourage those small businesses.
When we were debating about having the food trucks, we heard a lot from the brick-and-mortar restaurants. But, I mean, to hear that these food carts have been downtown for over 20 years, and, and to my knowledge, we haven't heard from any of these brick-and-mortar places. And how, how many of them are, are open even late night for, for people to be able to get something? Because that's where I see is the advantage of it, is that it's, it's an affordable option for, for people to grab food. And, and as a healthcare provider, if somebody's been drinking a lot of alcohol, I think we want them to eat something. We want them to have food to eat. And if there aren't any options, then what are they supposed to do?
Absolutely. We used to get much more pushback on this program. We used to get much more pushback on this program from downtown businesses. We don't in recent years. As you noted, there aren't that many kitchens open past midnight. One thing that was also alluded to in the memo is more of a long-term concern, since we went to the eating, drinking establishment 500-foot rule, is that new restaurants coming into the downtown must choose to either serve alcohol and close at midnight, or not serve alcohol and stay open till bar close. And so we've seen a couple of restaurants choose on either side of that in recent years, and the fear is that over time, that incentive will be to close at midnight and sell alcohol. Those are the ones that we've witnessed staying open, whereas some of the ones that chose not to serve alcohol weren't able to survive.
I know there are other people who want to speak to this topic. Why don't we ask them if they want to come up and speak? And then if we need to ask Simon other questions, we can do that afterwards. Good evening.
Good evening.
What patience you have, pretty astonishing.
To the opportunity, we didn't think we were gonna do this at the work sessions.
You gotta speak into the microphone. Please say your first names.
I'm Mark Caterno with Marco's Grilled Cheese, George's Euros, Paco's Tacos.
Pete Johnson, the same, co-owners of Marco's Grilled Cheese, George's Viscous.
So I just want to touch on, so when we started in 2000 with Marco's Grilled Cheese, the city had their requirements of being out there during lunch, and then certain nighttime hours, we always abided by those. We never wanted to get off that lunch. The city allocated a daytime spot and a nighttime spot, and we just pushed the cart to both. I don't know why, but on one end of the ped mall, they would buy at lunchtime, the customers, in the evening they wouldn't. That's just how it worked. So when the city lifted that requirement to have to be out there during the day, they also decided only to give us one spot, so we didn't have that option of two anymore. We never wanted to stop lunches. In fact, I reach out to the city probably every year, asking again, can we go back out to our old day spot so we can be out there during lunches and not lose money? It all boils down to losing money or not losing money. Our windows to make a living in this business, you know, we don't write the rules, we just have to react to the truths, are those busy rushes? I mean, that's just the way it is. If you take that away, I mean, even at midnight, I mean, it's not feasible to survive on two hours, you know, 8:00 p.m. to midnight, I mean, we wouldn't have a chance.
And we've tried, the city, over the last 20 years, the city's moved, the city has managed offices, tried, we've tried different things. We've been on Iowa Avenue, we've been on a couple of different places, we've tried over by Kindon Joe's Place in that area, and it just hasn't been the same. I mean, there's nothing that can replace that kind of rush of people that come out of those bars in the late night hours, and we're still very much out during the day. I mean, we still do Arts Fest, Jazz Fest, we do Gay Pride, we do concert after, sorry, concert series. We do any special event, basically, that comes to town. So we're still very much out there during the day. We'd like to be out there for the lunch crowd, but where we're at, kind of in front of Brothers is where we're kind of stationed right now, is very much a bar scene with the patios that they've replaced, which I think are great, the restaurant patios. But that's taken whatever lunch business was in that area, which is pretty dead during the day, if you've ever walked down there. Oh, it's better now with the patios. It's just not enough business to justify being out there. So it's not that we don't want to do that, it's just that the revenue doesn't justify it, and if there are people down there, we're down there, you know, we're out there. If there are people there to buy food, we're out there, but just like any other business, I mean, a lot of the restaurants aren't open Monday, Tuesday, Sunday, you know, for a reason. It's just there's no one there to sell food to, you know. So we can look pretty, but there's just not much, it's not survivable. You know, it's still tough.
And just to clarify, George's Euros was started by George Mihalopoulos in 1984. Prior to that, there was a popcorn cart. Do you guys remember that at all? So I mean, we're talking about 40 years, really, of food carts, or of carts, semi-permanent, and the popcorn cart, I remember, was kind of a permanent fixture.
Yeah. And the reduction of permits has really been, that's not been at our behest, it's been, over time, the city has reduced those permits. And there was a time when you had so many people, you know, you had so many vendors kind of fighting over, it was a burden on the city, I think, for a while, but it's been many, many years since it's been that way. And the city, over time, has basically taken those opportunities, away of the opportunities you were talking about with, you know, people coming in, starting businesses and moving to brick and mortar type situations. When you've reduced it down to four, and basically what we did, just naturally through attrition, these people retired, we bought their business. The two other carts that we own besides Marco, we simply bought because they were going to just throw them away. So, and the idea was out there, we took it, we bought it. We didn't mean to have some kind of, you know, crazy monopoly on carts. When they reduced the permits down to four, it made it look like that. So it wasn't necessarily something that we did, this was something that the city very much, over time, eliminated the permits and then took away the day spots. So that's why this memo is kind of frustrating to us, because it seems to say, well, this program is kind of disintegrated into this, and it doesn't serve the original purpose, when in reality, you know, the city, and I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, there's been multiple different city managers over time, have kind of slowly but surely kind of whittled it away on their own, and we can't figure out why.
And just to clarify, it went from five carts, or permits total, in 2000 when we started, then they expanded to eight, and then they've since retracted back, they being the city.
Yeah. And originally, as the plan was proposed to us, it was more of a, it was more to create character and kind of a uniqueness to Iowa City. And, you know, if you go to any city, my favorite's Philadelphia, where you have Philly cheesesteak sandwiches after dark. You know, a part of your city, you've got the day side, character of your city, and then you've got, in my mind, every good city's got a vibrant nightlife with unique stuff, right? And food carts are always a part of that. Every time I go to Philly, I go and get a cheesesteak sandwich after dark, and, you know, I challenge you to find anybody in Philadelphia that doesn't think that that's a vibrant part of their culture, you know, that makes them unique, that makes them different than just kind of every other bland city out there. So, you know, to say that there's, you know, we've kind of moved away from that, and there's really no purpose to it, to me, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I mean, it's, you know, we're a 20-year, I mean, not to brag about us, but you go anywhere, you know, I travel, you know, all over to airports all over, you know, the world, and I wear my Marco shirt on purpose, and I see people come up to me, and they're like, oh my God, I love Marcos, you know, it's amazing, that's awesome, you know. I was there in Marcos and Iowa City, and hit Marcos every night after the bars for four years that I was there, you know. So this is really spread out, as we've had, you know, 20 years of University of Iowa students coming through. We joke that we're now as old as the youngest, we're older than the youngest freshman coming in to the university, and so that's gotten around, and so to say that that kind of means nothing was kind of painful to.
Well, didn't you guys start this in college, too?
Yeah, I was a sophomore in college, Mark was a senior.
I was finishing.
Yeah, he was just finishing, so.
And you were undercapitalized, and this is a good opportunity to start a business with virtually nothing.
Yeah, we borrowed $7,000 from my parents at like 10% interest, and we paid it back in our first year, which was amazing. So, and we've always wanted to go to a brick and mortar operation, you know, we just, you know, we just never knew whether it really, whether this concept could really support it. We'd love to do that, Mark still tries to talk me into it about every year, but, and you never know, we may do it. We just trademarked Marcos this year because a bar in Chicago was selling the Marco's grilled cheese, it was an Iowa-themed bar, and first I thought about sending them a cease and desist, but then I kind of realized it was a compliment more than anything. But, you know, I can't remember where I was going, I just lost my train of thought. But anyway, yeah, I mean, to say that it's not, you know, it's not, you know, a part of Iowa City culture to me is not seeing the whole picture, you know. And Simon's argument about, you know, somehow we're digging into the, you know, the bar's food revenue, and because of that, they're opting to sell booze instead, to me, doesn't really hold a whole lot of water, because, I mean, if you were to take all of our revenue, what we make, and I'm happy to show you what we make, and divvy it up amongst the 10 or 15 bars in there, we would barely pay a month's rent. I mean, we're just not, we're not cutting into them enough. You'd be better off taking Pancharos out, right? Pancharos and, you know, Jimmy John's and McDonald's as opposed to us. So that's a little bit perplexing, so. Yeah, I've got, I mean, I could stand up here for four hours and explain this to you, and I tried to get some of these points to you, too, but we just found out about this, we were kind of shocked, because we just found out about this Thursday night, I was on my way to vacation with my family, and so I was kind of writing this up in hotel rooms and in the car on the way, and talking to you guys at the same time. So we haven't had a chance to kind of give you all the information here, but I'm happy to answer any more questions, you know.
I want to chime in, too. When the city went from one-year permits to three-year permits, I was never given any indication that the program might stop. Jan is who I was dealing with at the time, and really, I mean, I have all the letters and emails from her and the city, but, I mean, it was simply a procedural change from one year to three years. We had no idea that the program, I mean, there's always modifications to the program, and we've always adjusted to whatever the city has wanted, essentially, but we had never any indication that anybody might want to kill the whole program.
And to the contrary, we had been asked to come in, which we do on time to time, when we owned our taxi company, owned Marco's Taxi as well, and the city would bring us in, and which we appreciate, would bring us in and, you know, ask us, you know, what's the best way to do this, you guys have been doing this the longest, what's the best way to do this? And so they did the same thing when they were doing the big ped mall construction project. And so we came in and we, you know, we talked about, you know, power requirements and where the carts were gonna be and all this stuff. So naturally, in our minds, we'd already been approved for the three years, they're asking us about the future of the ped mall and our place in it, you know, we're kind of thinking we have a place in it. So it was a huge shock to us when, you know, we got to the, you know, we got Thursday, you know, the call Thursday night that, hey, real sorry, but you don't really fit the plan anymore, we're gonna probably be done with you. And, you know, so, which we didn't quite understand, so.
Okay, I think we fully understand this is really important to you, so let us talk about it, and maybe we'll ask you questions again, maybe we'll ask Simon, I don't know. So who has a point of view here?
I do.
I would like to ask, if at all possible, you know, I don't know this nighttime scene downtown.
Well, John.
And, you know, I know I'm really, it's a big thing that I'm missing, I get that, but.
Do it once.
So I really would like to, I have not heard a word from the students on this issue, maybe you have.
I think they have an opinion. Where are they?
Yeah, so I was hoping to put an opinion out there, at least talking to students, seeing what their take on it is, because, as they said, it was kind of a short notice Thursday to Tuesday, but at least talking to them, generally speaking, obviously, I can't talk to everybody and anybody just in my network, but a lot of people enjoy having that option downtown. They value it a lot, and part of it could be the culture, that when you think about Iowa City, you think about these local businesses and really placing inside the ped mall. But then, at the same time, I heard concerns regarding kind of what Pauline said about if you don't have, let's say, carbs or food, essentially carbs and food help with deterring some of the side effects with overdrinking. So if any individual is drinking, that having those food options easy and accessible, that's hopefully gonna deter some of those overdrinking consequences. Along with that, I think, more of on a personal note, if you have more people, that creates more vigilance. This, the idea, kind of like that Jane Jacobs said about eye on the street, that when you have that visual aspect, that can deter some of those potential public safety concerns as well. So kind of looking at it the other side, other perspective. But generally speaking, I mean, UISG, I know, has put events in the past, not events, but like a stand to help distribute pizza, to kind of help with this dynamic of trying to help other students and individuals know to have carbohydrates when you're drinking and so forth.
Yeah, well, just to spin off from what Gustav just said, I want to introduce a couple of thoughts that are clearly relevant. One is, I'm not aware of any residents complaining about the food carts. You know, just maybe some residents are upset about them somehow, but I'm not aware of any complaints. I'm not aware of any businesses complaining about the food carts. If there are, I need to know that. And then conversely, I would anticipate that there would be an outcry if the carts go away. So that doesn't sound like a good mix of things to me. Just getting it out there as a, you know, part of our conversation.
I'm not only opposed to closing down the food carts, I actually think, to your point, we need to look at expanding these vending opportunities and reevaluating this program, because I think to Maz's point, I look at this as microentrepreneurship. And the fact that you guys are now 40-somethings, I think, only demonstrates what we're hoping to achieve, is that there will be a college student, or one of the people that, you know, Maz is working with, or whomever, that is gonna have this opportunity at microentrepreneurship. Now, we are very aware of the structural cost of the brick and mortar. We would very much want to monitor it closely if we expanded it, where we want to make sure it wouldn't adversely affect that. But to your point, if we're looking at the aggregate purchasing of these bricks and mortars, and we're looking at the impact of a food cart, we're talking about a relatively de minimis impact, especially with the timeframes that we're talking about. So for me, I want to keep what we have now unchanged, and I also want to look at this concept of what we do during the day, because I do think we need to look at opportunities for microentrepreneurship, and most importantly, access to downtown. It's extremely expensive to access our downtown business market. A lot of the downtown bricks and mortars have earned that over time, and I don't want to take that away from it, I want to be very limited, but I think we need to look at that. So I would actually like to expand what we're doing. So maybe you guys will be mad at us, we'll add competitors to you. But that's where I am at this point.
I think for me, of course, being here for 25 years, once the University of Iowa, and many of my friends come back, and, you know, the places that they want to go is gonna be Airline, is gonna be The Vine, and it's gonna be definite, definitely for some guy, row. What they learn is sometimes, back then, when they were drinking, you know, food was really, really good, now they realize that, one, they can't stomach some of this stuff like they used to, and then things probably wasn't that good, although your food is good. What I will say is this, when we're talking about safety, any issues or complaints, I even read about special events, I feel like all of that stuff can be resolved. One of the things, and that's what I was gonna talk about, is relooking at this program, because when I hear that we went from eight down to four, is that correct?
Yes.
So with that, there is limited opportunity for other individuals, and so I think that that's something where, whether we increase it, and if we increase it, you know, let's say we increase it back to eight, we need to make considerations for, all right, if there's eight people that are all now, you know, interested, but there's a ninth person and we have four owner, we have one owner owning four things, how do we do that, you know, monopoly? And make, you know, give opportunity to people. So, I mean, I am willing to relook at this, I'm not saying eight is where we need to be. I appreciate staff bringing this to us. For me, you know, I don't know that I'm gonna recommend making changes right now.
Can I make one, a couple of quick comments, because I think it's important to get in front of, one issue in particular, we've scaled down intentionally, we've scaled, we started that strategy probably 2014, 2015, knowing that the ped mall construction was coming and knowing there would be constraints. So we haven't filled some of those permits because of that. We experienced some of that pinch point last year. We had a lot of conversations with food carts, our staff did, about placements because of construction displacement, and it's going to be another issue this coming year, because the area that they want to be is going to be the one that's under construction. You know, I'd encourage you, if you want to continue the program, that's great, we'll do it. We felt it was our obligation to come to you and say, this is an extremely labor-intensive administrative program to manage. Our staff that manages this is oftentimes frustrated and dealing with a lot of questions that come in, whether it's from neighboring businesses that have concerns about placements, about carts that want to shift placements, about carts that want dual placements and different. It gets a lot more intense than what it appears, you know, it sounds like it's just kind of on auto. It's not, and that's why we're here talking about that. But if you all want to continue it, that's fine, we can do that. As you look to expand the program, you can expect you're going to double down on some of those challenges. We aren't restricting things because we have something against food carts, it's because there's legitimate problems that come up, and we've had trouble managing those problems. So I'm okay with, I see, I know where the sentiment is on this issue, and I'm okay with that, but I just want you to know what our intent is all along. It sounds like we've been intentionally trying to slowly bleed and close this thing out. That's not the case. We were preparing for a construction progress, project, and then as we took a holistic look at this thing coming into the new permit cycle, we just said, look, there's concerns in four or five different areas, maybe it's time to move on.
I really respect what you said, I understand it, but even that wasn't one of the reason on your memo. And the thing that you just said right now, I don't see it in your memo. And I don't know why, if it's really important, it should be there, that the first thing. Second thing, I really think this is a really important program. thing, I really think this is really important program, even though now with the construction, you can find a way for them to do, because this is, how long is going to be the construction there?
It'll be all of next year.
Okay. I don't know. Do you know where you're going to stand if, with the construction? I guess.
I think so. Yeah, I think so. And that's one.
If you're going to speak, you please come up there.
Yeah.
So, so that, and that, that was kind of a big deal for us last year, because we, you know, we had, we, we had to go through that construction period. And anytime you have that, and you ask any of the bars around how that affected them as well. But, I mean, we went, you know, we went in the red. I mean, we drew on credit lines to get through that. It was one of our worst years. And we were fine with that, thinking that we had a future. But then, then when we kind of made it all the way through that, spent all that money just trying to survive, being bottled in like that, which was fine. We understood it. You know, it's a better Ped Mall now, for sure. But, you know, and then to get yanked at the very end, that that was tough to deal with. But I, you know, we're more than happy, and I told Jeff this in our, in one of the meetings, we actually called a meeting to try to figure some of those things out that you're asking. I said, hey, if any major changes are coming down the pike, where you're thinking about making changes to this program, you know, we're happy to come in. We'd like to be part of that conversation. And so that's why we're a little surprised to see this memo come out, because nobody's, nobody's brought any of these things to us. They haven't said anything about the security. They haven't said anything about, these are the struggles that we're going to have. And we're happy to take the lead on that. I mean, we're happy to get, there's, and there's only two of us, really. There's Bon, me, and us. So we're talking about two individuals right now. And we'd be fine expanding that. And if more people come into it, you know, we'd be happy to take the lead on that and, you know, make sure that this is an easier transition, where they're not having to struggle so much with infighting between vendors. A little bit of that did happen, you know, back in the early stages of the program, when you had a lot of people. And when they were regulating menus and stuff like that, where people were getting angry that somebody was selling somebody else's food. And so I can understand that. Last five to eight years, I mean, there's really been two people to work with here. So I don't know how much of a struggle two people, two parties really could be. So, but we're happy to do anything, you know, that it would take to alleviate that, if that's an issue, for sure.
Okay. We could talk about this for a long time, but we don't want to.
Go down and get some food.
I think, I think I hear a clear sentiment to continue the program.
Yes.
I think I hear a desire on your part to work with the staff, to try to resolve some of these staff administrative kinds of issues.
Without a doubt.
Am I missing something?
I think, I think the only other thing potentially is, in the next three years, with them being renewed, is at some point in that time to have maybe more conversation at the council level and with staff about, do we expand, do we not? What are some of the drawbacks, you know, with the changes in the Ped Mall? Can we, do we really have room for more than four? So I think just having those conversations before we get to the, to the end of that three.
Just one final note, I just want to make, when I first heard it, I thought, well, three of the four are the same owner. But hearing your story tonight, I want to commend you, because, you know, to pick up those ones that were just going to disappear, you know, then we would have only had two. And then, then I might have some second thoughts about this. Is it worthwhile to have it? But I, but I see you as very respectable business and, and providing a safe, healthy food. So.
Thank you. Yeah, that's very kind.
That's all.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I think, you know, it's pretty damn late. And so we need to finish this discussion. I think we have two topics we need to address. One is the traffic collision analysis. I think that'll take just a few minutes.
Famous last word.
I thought I'd inject a little humor there. And the other is the proposed resolution about the Labor Center. So let's get the traffic collision analysis out of the way first. And so that's IP number eight. The staff desires direction on this. It's a very interesting report. I hope you all have read it. There's a lot of detail in there about where collisions occur most frequently, at intersections and in mid-block on. And it's clearly almost entirely about Highway one, Highway six, Riverside, well, Riverside Drive is Highway six, isn't it?
Mormon track.
And Mormon, a little bit on Mormon track, but mainly Highway one, Highway six. So what do you need from us, Kent?
Good evening, Kent Ralston, transportation planner, MPO director as well. So yeah, briefly, I don't know that we need anything from you, to be honest. That question remains. But, you know, we've done this analysis for the entire metro area as part of the MPO for a number of years. This was specifically asked for by the council as part of your strategic plan, just for Iowa City, for the years 2015 through 2017. As you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, you know, primarily where you see the high collision corridors are where the most vehicles are. It's just, it's just logical. What we do with it in turn is, staff takes this and actually looks into the top-rated collision areas, and sees what kind of countermeasures we can use and employ in trying to lessen the number of collisions. In a nutshell, that's what we do. That said, I don't know that we need anything from you. I think it was to make sure that you all had what you needed as part of your strategic plan. And then I think as part of one of the pending work session items, there was a sort of a, to be a joint meeting, I think, between Dr. Plummer, I think it was Plummer, I'm not sure, from the university, as well as an update on, on this. That said, I'm, if there's nothing else the council needs, staff will continue on regardless. And I'm sure you have other things to discuss at work sessions.
Yeah. So I'd like to suggest that staff reach out to Professor Plummer, so that she can participate in a work session discussion about this. She can provide us with an update on her research, and then participate in our conversation. It seems to me it'd be best to do this in February or March.
Yes.
So if we can shoot for that, that'd be great. Try to get her on board.
I just have a couple of comments that I'd like to make. You know, I think it's, it is interesting to see this. This is, this is sort of at the, you know, the highway scale aspects of our transportation systems. You know, nine of the 10 highest ranking streets are all state designated. So that's sort, it's sort of at the meta level in that regard. And there isn't really any discussion that I could see regarding pedestrian and bike safety. This was really about car, car on car collisions.
Right. Right. And what it does is it looks at every intersection and mid-block in the municipal boundaries that have three or more collisions.
Right.
We choose three or more because it's.
Right.
A pattern, so to speak.
So, you know, I would emphasize, and I think this is where Professor Plummer comes in, you know, her, her focus is on pedestrian safety, particularly with regard to children, because of their, their different cognitive abilities and how that affects their, their ability to safely interface with, with traffic. So I think that should, I mean, all of these streets that we've identified, which tend to be corridors with, with high traffic, typically, I would say they're, they're streets with more than one lane in each direction, basically, which is one of the big issues that we face, because of the, what that does in terms of accelerating traffic. That, if possible, it seems like it would be really useful to have that pedestrian and bicycle aspect.
Yeah.
Factored into this. Because all of these corridors are basically major barriers to anyone walking or bicycling. You know, the, the folks living south of Highway six, you know, that's a problem. You know, we don't have interstates, but we have, meaning, you know, freeways running through our city. But these state highways are the next worst thing.
Yeah. So, so, yeah. So we, we looked at bicycle and pedestrian data, and we have that collision data. The issue with that data is, while there may be 100 bicycle accidents last year, the thing is, is that that number's so small, and the accidents are so sporadically sort of dispersed around, around the city, is that there's no real trend. What you'll see, of course, just like we see on the major highways, is where we see our, our high accident locations for vehicles. The downtown sort of grid area, which is also, you know, shared with the University of Iowa, is where we see most of the bicycle accidents. But again, when you have one or two here and there, sort of sporadically dispersed around the community, it's hard for us to sort of react to that and try and find a solution to it.
Well, I guess my feeling is, is you may not find data at the level of a collision, but these intersections that occur along these corridors are unsafe for, partly because we know the traffic flows and their speeds, you know, the volumes and their speeds are going to have an impact on pedestrians and bicyclists, that we would want to consider how to address those intersections along these corridors, if possible. And then the other.
John, I don't want to cut you off, but can I please?
Well, I had one more comment. Okay.
Okay. But, you know, we're going to revisit this topic in another.
Well, in terms of preparing for this meeting, I just wanted to mention.
Be brief, please.
Yeah. In terms of the potential countermeasures, I just, I was a little bit flabbergasted to see that under roadway design inadequacies, widening the lanes was one of the remedies. I mean, so I'll just leave it at that. There are fifty-some-odd of, you know, in Speck's new book, about half of them relate to speed.
Right.
That, that's the core issue.
It is the core issue. The one thing I would say, and I sort of hold this back from time to time, but is that, you know, for every, for every request I'd say that we get in our office for slowing traffic and calming traffic, we probably get an equal number of requests for folks wanting to remove parking, and increase speeds, and coordinate signal cycles, so they can drive faster. So, you know, we've got this push-pull in our office, but certainly, I mean, safety is the key element.
Safety, yeah, exactly.
Jim, I just want to quickly thank Simon for providing us with all that data, because the numbers certainly weren't very surprising, but I think it, it does.
Thank you. And you'll, that report will be part of our, the discussion we have in several weeks, right?
Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, too. Okay, let's turn to item IP number six, the, on the January 17th information packet, the proposed resolution submitted by Maz here about the U of I Labor Center. So let me begin by stating a fact. And I'm going to get into it by saying, I was brought up a Catholic. So for those of you who know what Catholics do, they make confession. And so when you walk into confession, this is literally true, you go behind a door, there's a priest behind a screen, it's all dark, and then you say, Father, forgive me, for I have sinned. It's been, I don't know, 27 years since my last confession. And I must admit, and this is what I'm going to tell you, we had a discussion many, no, not many, a few months ago, about the Labor Center. And you directed me to write a letter to the president about it, expressing our view and our support for the Labor Center. I did not do that. And I didn't do it, I did not do it. First, because I was swamped with other stuff right after the meeting. Secondly, time passed, I forgot. Thirdly, I thought the decision was already resolved in time, more time had already passed. None of those are good excuses, but it is a fact. So now, we have a proposal to do a, a resolution. And I want to suggest a different procedure. I mean, I understand the motivation. We could either issue, I could either read a proclamation, which conveys the essence of what we want to say, or I could really write a letter and really send it. I don't think a resolution would be, be the, be the appropriate thing. But if we write, if we do either a proclamation or a letter, I think it's really important that we not explicitly criticize the president of the university, or tell him what to do. Partly because I personally have to work with the president of the university on several topics of mutual interest to the university and the city of Iowa City. And I don't want, I think it's really not wise to disrupt that relationship. Moreover, we're not an advocacy organization. We are one of many governmental units in the city. So what I would like to suggest is that we either have me read a proclamation, or write a letter that expresses all the things we admire about what the Labor Center has done, all sorts of positive information about the Labor Center. But then not, not do the other things I mentioned.
And you said, why is not resolution?
Well, a resolution is a particular tool we can use. One of you could help me on this. What's the formal rationale for issuing a resolution versus a proclamation, Eleanor?
Well, for one thing, a proclamation, we read proclamations without a vote of the city council. So they can be submitted and read. A resolution is something that is voted on by the city council. So the city council is going to have to, everybody's going to have to agree, or four of you are going to have to agree with that for it to pass. Resolutions are typically, I mean, you can use them for all sorts of things, and we do use them for all sorts of things. They tend to be more to make something happen that you have control over, to approve a contract, to put a policy in place, that kind of thing. But it can be used for this purpose, if that's something that the council wants to vote on.
Okay. I do want to do a resolution, and here's why. That the proclamation is just sort of a statement by the mayor that does not represent our judgment as a body. It does not reflect our view to the, the University of Iowa president as to what should happen to the Labor Center. I agree with you 98% of the time. We are different bodies. We want to tread very carefully with our other partners. And there's no greater partner in the city of Iowa City than the University of Iowa, which we love, you know, go Hawks, right? But this is such a critical issue. I mean, I'm very passionate about it, not just because I have enormous respect for everyone, but I literally think that lives are on the line if they close. I'm serious. I think sexual harassment is on the line if they close. I think training, the training that the Labor Center does is absolutely critical for safety education, labor enforcement, working conditions that they train throughout the state. And so the fact that this could be closed, I think, would not only impact direct community members that are part of labor movements, and even just everyone who has a job, but I think people throughout the state, and I know what makes them feel uncomfortable. And I know potentially he may feel uncomfortable. But I think, given the fact that they've made the decision to make us feel uncomfortable, and unsecure, and unsafe, and a lot of our residents unsafe, we need to do the resolution. It will make them uncomfortable. But we all sit here in a very comfortable position as upper-middle-class people that are not directly beneficiaries of this, at least directly. So I think we have to do it. And, and if you decide it's unwise policy, you can vote no. You know, we could have a divided council on this. But I think we need to stand and support it.
My preference is, I mean, we decided a few months ago, I think we talked about a resolution at that point in time, and a letter, and the decision at that point was the letter. So while it didn't get done, I would suggest that we go back and do what we had previously decided, and that is the letter.
And I, I agree with that. And, I mean, it's common knowledge that I, I'm a union member and have been for over 20 years. I've also actually been a supporter of organized labor for over 35 years. And during that time, I've come to know the Labor Center staff, and seen firsthand the benefits of the education they provide. It's much more than just about unions, as Rockne had hinted about it. It's about the health, safety, and well-being of every working individual in, in the state, as well as folks come from all around the Midwest to take classes there. And it's also beneficial to the employer. But what we need to do to point out, I don't think we need a lot of rhetoric. As I told you, I think, very well-written Maz here, but I think it is lengthy, and it doesn't really get the point across. The feeling that, that we have, that we urge them to, to support, that we support the Labor Center, and we urge them to reconsider their decisions about the furloughs and the decreased funding. So, but I just, I don't think we need a lot of rhetoric, as in, as in a very long resolution. But I am supportive of the Labor Center, and supportive of us saying something to the university about it.
I really support a resolution. And now, to your point, Jim, that we work with the universities, we work, yes, we work with the university, and though, like, we need the university, and the university need us, too. We are not like starting like fight or demanding them, hey, if you don't like make the Labor Center, leave the Labor Center open, that means the city of Iowa City is not going to do any work with you. No, we are not saying. We're just laying our value, that what we see, we know the Labor Center has been helping a lot of people, improving the life of a lot of people in this community. Our, Iowa City is growing. We have a lot of refugees. We have a lot of immigrants coming in. The Labor Center being teaching classes about the right and workplace discrimination, wage theft, everything will sing, really, you know, they've been providing that. And I think resolution will be strong. At the same time, it's not like saying anything that, give them the impression that, hey, we want you to do that. If not, we are not like doing anything with you anymore. No. We're just laying our value. And even if, at the end of the day, if they decide to close the Labor Center, we're still going to work with the university. You know, this is have nothing to do with like, really, you know, like making that relationship bad or anything. And by the way, if you don't know, the student government is really passing the resolution by like 77%. They also. know, the student government is really passing the resolution by like, 77%. They also encourage the, the university to do the same thing. And I guess we should do it.
Yeah, just to make sure I'm clear about this. I don't have any objection whatsoever to issuing a document. It could be a resolution. It could be a proclamation. It could be a letter, expressing how, how much we value the Labor Center, and what good work they have done. I'm just saying, I personally don't think it's wise to explicitly call out the president and criticize him and tell him what to do. I think that's a mistake. But expressing all the things we value about the Labor Center, which implicitly says, support the Labor Center, you know, I think that's a wiser thing to do.
So I wanted to mention that, yes, US student government passed a resolution because the Labor Center has been doing some amazing things. I just wanted to also mention or that, recognize that the appropriations with the fund, so if a resolution or whatever is done, that recognizes that this problem results from appropriations. And that also potentially talk to graduate students, because graduate students, through the funding model, graduate students are the ones that are being paid, since I'm not personally representing graduate students. We've had that discussion. But yeah.
Resolution letter. When I look at this, I immediately think about things within the road to disability, where the city of Iowa City could have came and said some things to the East Central Region, said some things to the state of Iowa that impacts local agencies personally. I, I think a letter would do it. A resolution would do it. I'm not exactly sure, you know, is the argument over letter versus resolution. And it sounds like people are saying a resolution is more strong. I am hesitant to, you know, give anything to the university that would be, you know, very demanding. Although I'm not hesitant to, you know, give it, give something to the university in support of the Labor Center. I don't, personally, letter, resolution, as long as we get the point across.
So you agree with a resolution, then?
Oh, yeah.
What if Jim were to, what if Jim were then to write the resolution, to take away some of the, the language that you had objection to? So you indicated that you weren't in objection to it. So that way you could speak as a body, and you would be, be more diplomatic so you wouldn't have that concern.
You've got to keep me on board with regard to this. I'm happy to do that. But I will be traveling tomorrow, and Thursday, and Friday, and Saturday, and then come back on Sunday. So this is the same thing that happened the last time. I got swamped with some other stuff, and then, you know, time passed. So I'm not trying to excuse myself. It's just a fact.
Or you could just excise the parts that you don't like.
You see, like, can you tell us which one is not?
Oh, well.
I don't, I'd prefer not to get into that level of detail at this point.
Yeah, it's a lot of detail. Okay, can you, we didn't hear from you, John?
Yeah, I support the resolution. I think it's best, it's for the council to basically be the, the voice. And I think Jim should massage it. I think he would do a great job. It would also be consistent with the student government if they issued a resolution. So I think, I think the resolution is the way to go. And we're sort of, we have some material here. It just needs to be, I think, condensed and-
I don't know if there's anyone else on the council that would look at the resolution and give, recommend something to the mayor for a revision.
I'd be happy to.
If you want to do it.
I'll channel you, Jim, and I'll make it diplomatic. Believe me? No, I will.
That's, it's okay with me.
Okay.
And then we will collectively look at it. It's a resolution. We'll vote on it. Yeah. All right. It may well be that we should stop, unless somebody has something incredibly important to bring up.
I concur.
The only thing I would like to do is maybe, of course, not talk about it now, but definitely in the future, from the 17th information packet, we got the-
Construction.
From MPO, Kent sent something? Is it?
It's in the tent, the regional transit.
It's in the tent.
Oh, the regional transit, yeah.
I really want to say-
IP four? If we can just talk about that in the future.
We'll put, I'll just re, we can repost that in the packet.
Thank you.
And are you going to talk about the 17, back in item number 10? I just have one
questions about that. You know, the regulation of construction activity, I remember the woman who come here and complain about that. And I read on the memo, and they said that there has been like, the city has been receiving like, many complaints about the same thing. I guess my question would be, what was the result of the complaint receiving regarding noise due to the construction activity? I really would like to know that, because we need-
I'd say we have, I'd say we have very few complaints. I think that's what we were trying to convey in the memo, that there's only a few complaints per year that we get on this issue.
Okay, and what's the result of that? Like, did you reach out to those people who complained? Or you just received the complaint and that's it?
No, we, we'll talk with them. We'll explain the rules and regulations. And if we need to, we can reach out to the contractor and try to make sure either the contractor's working within the bounds of those rules, or at least they know that there's a concern, even if it is operating within the rules. So we, we try our best to mediate.
And nothing going to be done about this, right?
Not without your direction.
I don't know. From our perspective, there isn't anything that needs to be done.
I don't think there's anything.
I just, so when I, if something has been done, yeah, I respond to them. Make sure they receive something.
Okay. I think that's it.
Council listening post?
We don't need to talk about that tonight.
Oh, the KXIC, there's time to-
Well, we need to book a room.
Yeah, we need to book the room. Monday, February 11th, from 5:30 to 7:00.
When?
February the 11th.
What she said, February 11?
We just need two council members, February 11th.
Where? The Monday, IMU, in the Black Box Theater.
Oh, I said I, I am going to that one, right? Is this for February 11?
I could go if no one else wants to go.
Well, I wanted to confirm, I think it was Mazza and-
If someone else wants to go.
Was it Rockney?
I can go.
As long as that date still works, because at the time-
That works, if you just send your-
Does that date work for you? No?
That day's not good. I know they were pretty tight room-wise at the IMU.
I can do it.
What time? 5:30 to 7:00.
I think I can go, yeah.
That's Monday, February 11th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What about the KXIC schedule?
I can repost that if somebody wants to take February 6th, so we just have that one.
Yeah, because that'll be before our next meeting.
Okay. Any volunteer for February the 6th?
Staff will do it.
Wow, there's, there's an answer to that question. Okay, staff's going to do February 6th.
Please do it with me on the Rockney.
Yeah, yeah, you and I are going.
Okay, I think-
We're leaving.
It's a, it's a done thing.
I object anymore.